Our students lead us in the pledge, please. Which one of you chooses to do it? Thank you.
Alright, everyone stand, place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do have a report out of closed session this evening. By a vote of five to zero, the board took action to approve a stipulated expulsion agreement for student number two zero two three dash twenty four dash zero zero one. Do we have public comment? Oh, excuse me, need to adopt the agenda? Are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
Yes, so for thirteen G, we have a field trip. The students are going to New York, so it's we need to change the name to the New York, it was banned, now it's the New York band and dance competition. So we have the dance students are also attending along with the band. The number of students will be increased to sixteen additional students. And there'll be one more chaperone because the dance teacher, Ms. SD, will be going. And so other than that, it'll just change the number, those numbers.
Thank you. We have a motion, please, to approve the amended agenda. Student vote?
In favor.
Thank you. All board members on favor. I oppose, carries five oh. We have, start with our reports. We have first our student were member and you're reporting tonight. Thank you.
Yes, we have a report. Alright, starting with Top of the World Elementary School. The annual PTA Bonanza was a success. Students had a lot of fun. They look forward to it every year. There was also family astronomy night with guest speaker Dr. Jeff Gray from NASA, so that was exciting. The pals program has started up there at Top of the World and there's an upcoming canned food drive. The student body planning that. There's also the Junior Master Gardeners Program, taking care and revamping that back garden. And then moving on to El Moro. The Boo Blast is tomorrow, really exciting event. Kids are really happy about that, really excited. The Sea Lion Squad composed of third, fourth, and fifth graders who step up and contribute to the student body at El Moro. They've all planned a spirit week with monochrome day, twin day, wacky Wednesday, and throwback Thursday. That's something nice. And then the care team is also planning a food drive together to get canned goods through November fifteenth. And moving on to Thurston Middle School. The pals program has begun here where students help incoming sixth graders with academic support. ASB and pal leaders are supporting activities to promote National Anti-Bullying Month, which is this October. And the first school-wide fall dance is tomorrow with three hundred students interested and excited to participate. And last but not least, Laguna Beach High School. Students are really excited for the opening of our fall production holes. That's super exciting. There was a preview today during our tutorial period. The homecoming and homecoming pep rally went well with lots of engagement from our students. It is red ribbon week this week to combat the use of drugs and promote awareness against drugs. And additionally, there's a senior camping trip that happened over the weekend and students had a lot of fun.
Thank you. I apologize, need to backtrack and ask for public comment on non-agenda items.
None received?
Thank you. We knew to the, our bargaining units and we have a report tonight from Luba Sarah.
Good evening, everybody. For my report, I thought, I asked, we recently had our conferences, elementary had conferences, we had professional, secondary had professional development. And I took a, I asked our elementary teachers from grades one through fifth grade, both schools, I got representative sample. And, and asked what do they think about their goal-setting conferences? So, this is kind of a conglomeration of what they gave me. They said, these conferences serve many purposes, but one of the most important is the ability to establish a partnership with families. This partnership is crucial for working together throughout the year to support student learning. Setting goals is an important part of growth and improvement, no matter where a student is starting from. All our students benefit from taking ownership of their learning and identifying their strengths and areas for improvement. They especially benefit from the guidance and support that comes from parents and teachers working together. Conferences allow teachers to create and continue to grow a relationship with parents where they work together to help students achieve their goals. Conferences provide opportunity for relationships between parents and teachers to set clear expectations. They are private and personal conversations, individual, individual lies to their children. And so families may share any social and emotional issues that they may need help in addressing. It's great to be able to talk to parents about some of their hopes and concerns about the many aspects of their child. And while email communication is efficient, it doesn't supply meeting with parents in person. So obviously, the theme to that is relationships matter. Parents want, parents and teachers want to partner together in their child's learning, their students' learning. I know when my kids had conferences, I always appreciated it and enjoyed, you know, felt it was valuable at that time, many years ago. And while the elementary teachers were conferencing, secondary teachers participated in professional growth. And we had a tutorial in Thrively, which is a strength-based learning platform to increase overall classroom engagement. And allows us to get to know our students better and what they feel their strengths are. Teachers also valued collaborating within their safety groups for in case any emergency should arise and discuss the duties and processes, needs and update emergency backpacks. We always feel a little bit better and more secure when we've done that, like we've, feel like we are more able to handle an emergency. And take care of the students here on campus. So it gives us also a sense of security. And secondary teachers are focusing on implementing MTSS and utilizing flex time management to identify and support at-risk students with the goal of increasing the number of students with passing grades. And clubs on campuses are booming, school spirit is high, and it seems like there are more students participating in ASB than ever before, and they are, seem to be very active out on both campuses. And Labufa has completed seven days in negotiations and we can see the light at the end of the tunnel. And we are hopeful and feel positive that we will wrap things up on November third.
Thank you. We have a report from our school resource officer.
Everyone again, I feel like this is the busiest month ever for us, so it's always Fred's favorite one to hand off. Like, go ahead, Ashley, go talk about everything. So I've got a little bit of pumpkin spice latte just running, it feels like in a drip line this month. Fred and Officer Lopez, to keep the, the theme of Red Ribbon Week going on, they went last week to the parent project and spoke about drug trends, which turned into a lot of e-bike discussion. But that's alright, that was a good time and it was well received. Last night, we had the city in the, the Parents Club Halloween Parade, which was fantastic. The kids are already wired, so they were bouncing all over the place and it seemed to carry on today on the campuses. We recently joined the national, and when I say we, the police department, joined the National Center of Missing and Exploited Children. And so what that's enabling us to do as an affiliate member is it's giving us a formal curriculum that we're going to be introducing into the classrooms with NetSmarts, which is a really, really neat cyber awareness and different education tools for us. So we're really excited about that. Working on creating an after-school or after-hours, kind of like a parent bootcamp that's going to help tackle that. Yesterday, I was at a half-day SRO conference, which was amazing because the topic was e-bikes and social media. So it's not going anywhere, the statistics were, have increased quite a bit. But Laguna Beach received quite a few shout-outs from the Orange County Sheriff, Don Barnes, for all the work that we've been doing in partnership with the district for e-bikes and also how great just, we've been out there with promoting everything. So we have over a hundred and fifty kids who've attended the e-bike course, looking forward to doing more of those. I feel like they're kind of getting bored. It's like they want advanced course now. So my favorite place to hang out after school when Thurston gets out is right over there on Mystic Way. And I've tried, kind of turned into the taxi now for the kids because they're like, wait a second. You'll hang out over here, we'll give me a ride down park where I can then go jump on my bike and ride back up park. I'm like, what, what are you doing? So that's been a good time. Excuse me. The kids are also starting to cash in on their school currency, so everything they're doing for being awesome on campus. And what they're doing is they're cashing it in for ride-alongs for ice cream with me, so we've conducted four. I have seven pending now, thank you, Megan, for that. So what it is, is after school, I pick up the kids and they grab a friend or siblings and we go to an ice cream shop, turn on the lights and sirens, get everyone excited, you know, to be in a, in a police car and, and have fun with that. So my waistline is not going to appreciate it soon, but it's, it's been a good bonding time. TOW Bonanza was fantastic. If you didn't get a chance to see our car, it was decked out in neon as usual, which will happen again tomorrow night at the Boo Blast. I was auctioned off for a ride-along, so again, more ice cream, it's going to be great. Maybe they'll mix it up one of these days and we'll do something else. But the most important news from TOW, which I was reminded today at lunchtime, there's a group of fourth graders, so I've got to give a shout-out in case their parents are watching this right now. Who are being educated properly on the greatest athletes of all time in the NBA, so we're very excited about that one. We've been really impressed again with Thurston, with, with the e-bike education. Our focus has been when popping in the classrooms at the end of the week, just to remind them about the football. When you're attending LBHS football games, just what we expect. And thank goodness, we haven't had too many issues, it's been great. Everyone is coming there, the school spirit, you know, has been, it's palpable when you walk in, it's great. I love getting to spend more time at the high school this year because you feel it. The, the homecoming game, the dance, everyone was great, it was fun to be there, the number turnout was terrific. We do want to make sure that everyone has a chat at home and maybe in the classrooms, not just with us, again, about the social host ordinance, so we'll be discussing that as well in the time, as it gets closer to the holidays. Just remind everyone, hey, we're all excited to be home, but parents, we have a responsibility to do. El Moro, we, we had karaoke with a cop, looking forward to that, so if you aren't following the SRO Instagram, please do because I'm going to make sure that I get lots of video of Fred on there with him and his, his singing and dancing. Again, there'll be decorating the car tomorrow, El Moro, and then also a reminder for parents to please wait your turn at pickup, follow the correct flow of traffic. So you'll see presence now of the Park Rangers and our motor officers a little bit more, so the warning is out there, but everyone's been incredibly cooperative. And it's, it's been very nice this year. But so far, that's it. It's been a whirlwind of a month and we're looking forward to the next couple of months with holidays.
Thank you. Busy, busy.
Yes.
Superintendent Dr. Floria.
I'll keep it as brief as I can. So, one, I want to thank the sand volleyball coach and the boosters there. We hosted, I think, the first ever sand volleyball invitational tournament. Couldn't have asked for a nicer day. And the students were very excited to be a part of that, so I thank Dr. Allman and, and Dr. Selby for walking with me down to the beach. And we were able to watch a couple of the matches that day, so it was fantastic. The, as many of you know, you were all there, we had the Family Resource Center grand opening. Again, much appreciation to our team for all the work they did there and getting that up and running. And obviously, our great partnership with the school power as well. I did a rotary presentation kind of on the opening of schools and kind of how things are going and again, they're just a great partner. They provide scholarships to students, they provide dictionaries to students, they read to kindergartners and first graders. They really enjoy being and supporting schools. I also attended the AXA Leadership Assembly, where I had my role as the Vice President of Legislative Action for our region. Talked a lot about all the bills that got signed and, and some that didn't, which was good. And kind of what the next steps are going to be as we turn around and enter another legislative season, which, it's like, you know, take a deep breath. It just, it just goes so fast, right? What's that? Well, right, it was, we, in, in California, we, we just continue to roll and so we, they have their little recess right now and then in January, there's a lot of things that were still sitting in committee that will probably be revisited. But we do appreciate the governor vetoing certain things that we had talked about previously. Some of the bills that just weren't good for kids. And, but he did sign a lot of new things and we, as the staff, will continue to kind of figure out what those mean for us and as we move forward. So, again, I appreciate the board's support in allowing me to take time and be part of that role. And again, it's been, it is busy, fall is busy and it's a mad dash to, I know Veterans Day and then Thanksgiving holiday and then it just kind of starts to get very, very busy up and through the, neither, so. We're ready to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Our executive cabinet members, Mr. Dixon.
Thank you. We started working with our workers' compensation insurance company on a new pilot program and we're hoping to roll it out by the end of the calendar year, maybe shortly after. And essentially what it is, it's a new nurse triage program for workers' compensation and it provides access for all employees to get a toll-free eight-hundred number to reach out and they'll be connected with an actual registered nurse so they can get quick medical advice. And in, in instances where they require additional medical treatment based on the injury, the nurse will actually reach out to local urgent care centers to make sure they have the availability and can treat the wound or injury before sending the employee there. So our hope is through this pilot program and we've talked through some other organizations and districts who have implemented similar programs, is it reduces and mitigates the severity of injuries because you get faster treatment. But it also makes sure you get appropriate coverage and you're not necessarily going to the emergency room when you could just go to an urgent care. So we're hopeful that this is going to help with our workers' compensation insurance in terms of lowering our rates over the year, it's a set premium we pay. But we're excited and it is us and Brea, Alinda Unified, who are piloting it and the other two districts are going to start piloting it soon. And that's Orange County Department of Ed and Ocean View School District. So we're excited. On another set of news, last night, I did attend a meeting held at the city to discuss transportation services specifically out in the canyon area. The, as you know, the on-demand and the trolley services stop at Act Five and don't go any further. So what the city did is held a listening session and did a short presentation last night specifically for those residents out in the El Toro Canyon area to talk about maybe the need for expanding the trolley and/or on-demand services. There was no commitments made by the city. I was in attendance to hopefully clarify our busing and transportation needs as questions did arise. There were a few for us, but most of it had to do with wanting the extension of the city services out to that area. I do provide a bit more information in the weekly update about that meeting, but it was very productive. People seemed like they really appreciated being heard and getting the feedback put out for the city to consider. And it's the first step, it seemed like, in what would be an ongoing process with them. So as I continue to participate, been working with Michael Litchdi over at the city and we've been communicating back and forth and I'll keep you up to date as I learn more about this. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Jeff, is that the only part of the city that they're not serving with those two? Because some of that is in the city, is in the city boundaries out there.
Yeah, and it stops at the north side of Laguna Beach City as well. So it doesn't go all the way past into the county region, it's, it's, yeah, it's north-south Laguna and then up to essentially Act Five.
Thank you.
President Vickers, it goes just short of Three Arch Bay, so there's a couple blocks walk from where the final stop is, definitely walkable.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Mayberry.
Thank you, good evening. You know, this, since our last meeting, we've done some different school visits, both going to schools, there's a group of us that went down to visit schools in North San Diego County to look at some variety of elementary middle schools, they're doing more competency-based assessments and personalized learning, as well as some work-based learning experiences. And then we had El Segundo Unified come visit us for a full day. We had staff from elementary up through the high school and the district office, just sharing different best practices, highlighting mainly a lot of our programs that they wanted to learn more about. So that was really exciting. And then today, we actually had a, a learning walks with our own staff over at El Moro and then Thurston and middle school here in the afternoon. We had about twenty to twenty-five different staff members, from teachers, principals, psychologists, directors, and superintendent there. So visiting classrooms, seeing all the different things and the bright spots that are going on in our classroom and highlighting all that work. We are also, our unit design is, will start pretty soon, that is what probably are one of our biggest professional developments. We have sent out to sign up for the fall and spring cohorts here for year two and we have forty teachers already signed up for that, so that's exciting to hear. We're wrapping up our green ribbon application, it's due tomorrow, so we don't have a choice but to wrap it up. It's quite the application, so a lot of, a lot of work done by Glora Hardwood and Jeff and Ryan Zeta to put that together. So we're looking forward to submitting that tomorrow on behalf of the district. And then lastly, I just wanted to highlight and remind everyone that this next Wednesday, November first, is our LBSC Presents with Lynn Lyons. At six o'clock over at the high school, it's a wonderful, hopefully, everybody can make it and all the parents and kids can make it as well. It's such a positive message around youth and mental health and different ways to support students. On our side, it's also nice when we bring in these presenters, we often have them for longer than just the event. And so we'll have some time to work with our staff with her as well in smaller group settings. So that's, and we'll have some sets with students as well, so it's really exciting day for the district and we'll have Lynn Lyons here next Wednesday. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted, Mike's not here tonight, he had to fly back east for a funeral, so I'll handle his things, but he just, our thoughts and prayers got to him and his family at this time.
Thank you, of course. We have a principal report, Dr. Hatchell from, for El Moro Elementary. Thank you.
Good evening, it's a pleasure to be here tonight and share a little bit about our goals and current progress of our work at El Moro this year. El Moro's goals were identified in collaboration with the students, parents, and our staff members to align with the district's LCAP goals in the areas of college and career readiness, in social emotional competencies and positive self-identity, and in safe, equitable, and inclusive schools. And within each of these areas, we have certain sub-goals that were also created in collaboration with our school site council. For goal area one, we will utilize our newer resources of our coaches and our TOSSAs to connect and apply the visual and performing arts standards to our essential learning outcomes, which is part of what we did last year. But we also want to dive a little bit deeper into our diversity, equity, and inclusion work as well. We also will be focusing on making learning more engaging and relevant by identifying and connecting with students' strengths and interests, as well as strengthening our teaching methodologies and pedagogy with our new learning profile. Much of this work, again, is deepening what we already started last year, including continuing to improve our lesson designs as Chad was sharing. We're looking forward to engaging in that again. Approximately sixty percent of our staff members have already done that work and are excited and we're seeing a lot of engagement as a result of that in our classrooms. We also look forward to having our TOSSAs, including our new Vapitosa, Cameron Stevens, who will be there full, who is here full-time this year, who'll work with our teachers to, to integrate all of those components. With the additional resources, we are really, really trying to delve into that DEI and VAPA work this year, and we're already seeing our kids that are really excited in those classrooms. Most recently, we had our Spanish teacher, Senior Fritz, who taught our students some of the traditional Hispanic dances in honor of the Hispanic Heritage Month. And we look forward to working with our students to highlight other native dances during our upcoming Heritage Days at the end of November. Some of our more intentional work this year will be focused on tying student interests and talents into our teaching and learning to really increase that student engagement and relevance and connectivity. Our students recently took the Thrively Assessment and that's a survey that helps students and teachers identify their gifts, their talents, as well as potential career options for them. And a group of our talented artists recently went to, in partnership with the Laguna Beach Plain Air to cremate, create absolute amazing work based upon the world that they saw around them, just right in our backyard here in, in Laguna. Mrs. Lycan's, our library and media specialist, also used the Thrively data to order hundreds of dollars of books that are in our library and that was really taking the data of what those kids are interested in and then placing them in our library and we've seen them really excited to check out all of those collections. Finally, our gate, gate teacher or gate coordinator, Annie Bohanek, use, recently used that Thrively Assessment data to plan our after-school program offerings for our kids. And our most recent one will be a STEAM class or in engineering based upon what they wanted us to offer. A new addition to our leadership walkthroughs, as Chad mentioned today, is an intentional connection to our learner profile. And this year, each of our grade levels is selecting one particular area of the learner profile to focus on as a team. Grade levels are working on creating the look-for's for both our students and our teachers that demonstrate and highlight our growth in this area. We are also inviting teachers, we had two today that joined our work and our walkthrough at Thurston. And that was really neat for us to be able to connect the vertical articulation between the elementary and the middle schools. For goal area number two, El Moro will administer our SEL screeners to identify specific areas of need for each of our students. And our MTSS team will continue to meet weekly to analyze data and needs from the screeners and referrals and develop targeted intervention for our students. To date, we've run several six-to-eight week focus groups for tier-two SEL intervention, as well as providing one-on-one counseling for our tier-three students. Our groups include social skills, friendship building, empowerment, as well as emotional regulation, executive functioning, and self-regulation groups focusing on impulse control, anxiety, and self-esteem. To date, we have twenty-five students participating in our tier-two groups and we have fourteen students that are participating in one-on-one counseling. We're also excited to pilot our Slumberkins lessons, which are, were, are provided to our primary students. And this is in partnership with a grant we received from School Power. Last year, we conducted several focus groups with our students, our parents, and as well as our staff members. And one of the dominant themes that came out of this data was our need to refine our PBIS and our character counts work. And given this feedback, we simplified our behavior matrix, which you can see here, as well as our reinforcement systems, and also connected this work in a more intentional way with PBIS and character counts. We've definitely seen that character counts is a beloved area of focus at El Moro and wanted to make sure that we kept that, kept that intact, but made it more relevant for our kids. In collaboration with our PBIS, our SEL, our school site council and PTA, we revamped our student recognition program, tying in character counts pillars with PBIS and growth mindset. Our new system recognizes and reinforces student behavior on a daily basis, as opposed to our previous monthly award assemblies. To date, we've recognized over one hundred students, many of whom would not have had the opportunity to be recognized with the previous change. Feedback from this change has been positive for both students and staff members and it's been very motivating for our kids to hear their names over the announcements every morning. Our final focus for goal area number two has been to increase student voice and choice and their connectivity to the El Moro campus. Additional feedback from these focus groups suggested that we need to shift the student leadership programs to allow for greater student participation on campus in a more meaningful and impactful way. With this, we created the Sea Lion Squad, as you heard Chase mention earlier tonight. And students are placed in one of three teams, the care team, the spirit team, or the green team, and they focus on servant leadership and planning activities that benefit our campus and our students. We have already planned spirit days, as again, you heard Chase mention, philanthropic events, as well as recycling efforts. And in our first session of ASP, we had twenty-five students participate and we just doubled that participation for our second session of ASP and we'll have fifty students participating. We are also creating a new student senate where two students will be elected from each of our third, fourth, and fifth grade classes per trimester. Again, representing that student voice and focus groups that will be conducted by our pals, our administration, food services, PTA, and I'm sure we'll even have Dr. Valoria coming over to help us to do a focus group. Chad, too, anybody's welcome. And the students will give input on problem-solving cafeteria items that we're serving, as well as ideas to help us to continually improve our student experience at El Moro. Overall, with these changes, we will increase our connectivity and representation by four hundred percent with this shift in systems, allowing any student in grades three through five who wants to be involved to do so on our campus. For goal area number three, we will continue to improve upon our MTSS support with a focus on tier-two instruction as well as enrichment. And tier-two generally provides that extra intervention for students who may need help reaching grade level standards, as well as those tier-one students. as well as those tier-one students who need that additional enrichment and are already meeting or exceeding standards. We will also refine our MTSS data analysis with a more targeted focus on our attendance. And we will complete our staff training for restorative practices, as well as expand that training to our pals composed of our fourth and fifth grade students. To understand a little bit about the why behind these goals, I'd like to quickly revisit our end-of-the-year goals that I shared with you last year, demonstrating our team's extraordinary efforts on closing the gaps with those tier-three students. And this was done through our designated win time or whatever I need time where students receive that targeted intervention based upon that data analysis that we conduct at our weekly PLC meetings, as well as our MTSS meetings. And while our MTSS reading and math teachers will continue to focus on the tier-three instruction, our grade-level teachers will also focus more intentionally on that tier-one and two students during the win time. During win time, you may often see small groups of students participating in book talks like you do here. This was led by one of our parent volunteers and sharing their evaluations of independent reading with their peers. This has actually developed quite a bit of excitement as our students try to sell their books and get their peers to read what they've read, in addition to increasing some of those SRC participations with Mrs. Lycan's. It's also been fun to see our teachers set goals with our new evaluation system, and we have all of our fourth-grade goals who took on the task of actually implementing edu protocols with assessment of independent reading at that grade level. So I thought this was a really creative way to be able to weave in technology with some of that old-school learning. Oops. Let me go back to that. On this slide also is a list of some resources that you can peruse at a later date. We shared this information with those that were in the Learner Center Collaborative Group that Chad mentioned last week. And in here, you will find the definitions of how we use our win time, as well as real-time data examples that we use to make decisions, how we structure our weekly MTSS meetings, and what we consider to be tips for success for how we use that win time. This data is pulled from our beginning-of-the-year iReady benchmarks in math, and it's just one of the data points that we use in creating interventions for our students that we implement during core instruction and that win time. And in addition to this beginning-of-the-year data, we analyze progress monitoring data every six weeks in order to adjust those groupings and instruction. In taking a deeper dive into our tier-three data, we, the majority of these students are either new to Elmore this year or already receiving targeted interventions through EL services and/or IEPs. After a successful year last year, closing the gap with other resources that we had, we're actually shifting some of those resources now to focus on that intervention for tier-two, as well as the enrichment. That's an exciting way for us to be able to allocate those resources wisely to meet all kids in all three of those tiers. And here's our beginning-of-the-year data in reading. And as we take a look at these results, you can begin to see areas where we need to prioritize interventions during our win time, such as with our third grade. While sixty-eight percent of students are performing in tier-one in reading, only eighteen percent are performing in tier-one in math. And over the course of the year, the data that we'll analyze at these meetings will help us to prioritize our instruction so that we can move those tier-two kids into the tier-one bracket. And this is an example, breaking down our tier-three percentages into actual numbers of students that we're working with. And as an added note, we've expanded our work. And as noted in the service plus, these are our tier-two-plus kids that are teetering at the lower end of that tier-two, and we're servicing them as well so that we can move them into that benchmark status. In working with our tier-two-plus students, and really all students for that matter, we break down our data to look at the specific skills that we need to target. We ask ourselves, who are these kids and what are their needs? Are they new to Elmore? What is their instructional background? Do they have, are they categorized as English learners? Are they special ed? Or maybe, might they have certain learning needs that we need to identify? And are they connected to other interventions, including our social emotional learning interventions and chronic absenteeism? That gives us a real picture of the whole child and how we need to bring all of our departments together in order to really meet their needs. And here you'll see an example of the work that our teachers do after each of our assessments. They look at these results during their PLC meanings, and then they prioritize their instruction accordingly and define next steps that they'll use in order to meet these students' needs. And last, but not least, probably my most favorite goal that we have is our continued focus on restorative practices. This has made a huge impact on our discipline and our approach to problem-solving, both between staff and students and between students themselves. We also have seen that it's developing a greater empathy between our students. This is an example of our training last week that we had with our pals. And as you can see from the serious looks on their faces, they took it quite seriously, and I have no doubt that they're gonna be great examples of leaders, student leaders on our campus. And with that, that concludes our report, and I'm open to any questions you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Hatchell. Lots of information. Board members, if you have questions, comments for the report?
So thank you, Dr. Hatchell. I hear great things coming out of Elmore, so it was a great presentation, and I appreciate all the hard work. I just have a couple of questions that are kind of from your presentation, but maybe bigger questions that this isn't the right venue to talk about. So the first one is you mentioned that you're doing assessment of independent reading, I think through the win thing. So I'd like to hear a little bit more of that, about what you meant by that.
Sure, I didn't mean to say assessment. I'm not sure if I said that.
I might have heard wrong.
Yeah, that's okay. We, during win time, if our kids are meeting standards and they don't need additional interventions through like tier-two, tier-three, or tier-two pullouts, we're trying to work with enrichment programs. So we are using some of that time in order to have them come together and do reading groups. So it's a good time for us to be able to utilize that time wisely. We, other teachers also do that throughout the day in different areas, but I've seen win time used as an example of a way that we can encourage them to share their reading and have fun with it.
Yeah, I think that's great because I think reading groups are really important. Although what I would say, which is not about you, but a more general issue, I think for the district, is that I would like to see more of a focus more generally on reading. I mean, I feel like outside of those, you know, the tier-one students who get to do that, we don't do enough of that. I feel like all three-tier groups should be doing independent reading. Parents should know that it is a central part of learning, independent reading at home. It should not be considered homework. And, you know, I don't, I don't know if we do enough of that at the elementary or middle school level. So I'm just throwing that out there, and that's not really about you, but your comment made me think about it in part, too, because we do these reading evaluations, which you also noted, and our students do well. But reading evaluations that are based on iReady tests aren't quite the same as teaching kids the endurance to get through books and understand plot and character development. And so I'm just kind of throwing that out there as something I think we should think about, both with win and beyond. And again, that's not just about you, but, you know, how we think about enrichment and homework.
Sure, if I can answer a couple.
Sure, I would love that. I just didn't want you to put you on the spot.
No, no, no worries. I'm happy to be put on the spot. Today, we had, and I'm gonna just share of things that I saw that highlight reading and some of the things that you mentioned in our walkthrough at Elmore. So one of the examples was in our third-grade class, they're reading One Hundred Dresses, and they did a connection with doing thin slides to ask the students to demonstrate how they would empathize in a more deeper way with the main character. So we're using our edu protocols, as well as tying it into literature at a developmentally appropriate way. That was one example for third grade. In fourth grade today, if I recall correctly, they were actually using, they were reading articles of their interest in presenting that article, the information on those articles, and they were of their choice. They had to read them outside and bring them in more as a current event and present it in an edu protocol. So in different ways, as a former English teacher, of course, I love the literature because that makes me excited. So we did see that, as well as kind of that narrative and that nonfiction reading that kids really need to delve into a little bit more deeply in order to elevate their understanding. So those are two of the examples I saw today. I'm sure that there's more, but happy to get back to you with more information if you'd like.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Thank you.
I was impressed with the slide that showed the library specialist with all the books that she had gotten, and I would imagine they're hot in someone's hands right now.
Yes, I got wrapped up in there for about a half an hour, just going through them. They're amazing.
It was all impressive. I loved your emphasis on student voice and that you're using restorative practices with students and teaching them how to run groups, and I think that's outstanding. I wondered, now that you have an art TOSA, how many times a month students get some kind of art?
Oh, all the time. They're in there at least every other week with Kama Stevens, at least. So in addition to.
At least twice a month.
I would say.
What it was last year?
I'm sorry, what's that?
Wasn't it twice a month last year?
I don't think it was quite twice a month for every, it was more of an opt-in, and every, every teacher is doing it twice a month. Most every teacher is doing it twice a month, and/or Kama is collaborating with them to help them integrate the VAPA within their, within their classrooms. So we have some of our teachers that are really cognizant of not necessarily wanting to pull their kids out into the art lab. So Kama will push in, for example, with fourth, some of the fourth-grade projects, so that she's working with the teachers to give them ideas that already build into their lessons. So I would, I would say twice a month right now. I don't have the schedule.
That's great.
I would say twice.
I'm sorry, twice a.
Yeah, but when I'm looking at where they're at, like it's twice a month where the Vapitosa is at. Now, the teachers are doing their own art lessons beyond that. But the, but the, when we set up the Vapitosa at each one, they're getting to every class at least twice a month, sometimes more, obviously more than that. But depending on what the teacher needs, or they're coaching them, maybe not going into the classroom, but they're, they're providing that expertise to the teachers that they can then implement it as well.
I think another really cool thing, if I can add, when we did our teacher goal-setting this year, one of the things, for example, in kindergarten that we're noticing is we need to work on fine motor skills. And I think part of that still is kind of coming out of that COVID recovery. And so as Kama's worked with us on analyzing some of those goals, she developed this incredible lesson to use droppers to take paint on a piece of paper so the kids have to really use those pincher fingers on the, you know, on the paper, as well as learning how to manipulate, kind of blowing straws and making art. It was, it was really cool, and that was an example of something that she did in collaboration with that goal-setting. And in kindergarten, they're seeing her a little bit more because they need that a little bit more.
I, that's so good for them. And is she doing other things in the arts besides visual arts? I mean, is she doing spoken word and media arts and some of the other?
She's collaborating with some of our teachers on the dancing part. That, that's something that she's worked with Senior Fritz on ideas with, and then also our coach. We're also using her for Heritage Days. We're changing that up a little bit, so Kama is working with that. The spoken word, I know in fourth grade, they like to have her work with some of their plays that they're doing. I'm not quite, I only experienced some of those one-time last year, but I know that there's some traditions that they're trying to embed her work so that they can deepen the VAPA. In fourth grade was one of them, I believe, is doing in their gold rush plays to see how they can, they can use her.
But it's really supposed to be at every grade level.
I'm just giving that as one example that I had heard of. But across the board, I know we have Willy Wonka in third grade that they'll work on, and she's, she's on call, you know, as, as needed to help the teachers, like we mentioned in kindergarten.
Okay, I can see that you're getting a lot more things in there, and I think that's great for students. It's a work in progress.
Absolutely.
I know it's not supposed to be just one play. It's supposed to be ongoing and all the skills you get with it.
It is. I'm just giving you examples of things that I, I know right now. Yeah, or that I've heard of. I haven't seen everything across the school quite yet for this year. But I know those are in the works as far as plans.
Okay, thanks, Sol.
There's only one TOSA.
For, for VAPA, we, last year, we had a halftime TOSA, and it was a really successful implementation. So this year, we have full-time. So the kids, the kids are getting more with that accessibility at recess times, and again, the collaboration with her.
Just seems like they're doing an awful lot.
They are, yeah. It's impressive. And I think a little bit more intentional to meet the needs of the kids.
Questions, other questions?
Yes, thanks, President Vickers. Dr. Hatchell, this is actually a comment. I don't have any questions for you, but I wanted to commend you for taking on a lot of new things this year. So some of the comments you made about the four hundred percent increase in opening up, and I would say kind of unseating a longstanding tradition of what, you know, ASB or leadership looks like at the elementary level, you know, looking at student senate, you know, tackling those things is hard. And so thank you for your leadership to look at things that are long-seated and long in the tooth in some ways and try and come up with ways that are better serving. I've witnessed these book talks. I never saw book talks before. What a great way to engage your parents in these outdoor settings, having really meaningful conversations about books at very young levels. It's been really interesting for me to see repeatedly. Every week I see these happening, different parents all throughout the grassy parts of your campus. So what a great redevelopment even on win time. And then lastly, I wanted to comment, you made a, just a small note on impulse control. You know, the board sees a lot of suspensions and expulsion, so I can't emphasize enough the work that you're doing with your counseling department to identify some of those things early on is so important. So thank you for looking at character counts, looking at ASB, looking at student leadership, looking at win time, and constantly redeveloping them for our students, because I think it's making a difference. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I actually have a question about the GATE program that you mentioned. Is that accessible to all students, or is it only accessible to a distinct group? Because I had a parent from TOW actually ask me about this because their child wasn't allowed in one of them. So I was just curious how it works at Elmore.
Great question. At both schools, I can speak for Miss Schooler and myself. We offer one designated GATE after-school class every, every session. Whatever we offer, and that's just for the GATE class, it might be chess for, for the first session. However, that same class is offered to other students throughout the year. So even though the GATE, it might just be offered for one session for GATE, other kids can take it throughout the year. So any GATE course that we ask, we offer, every student has accessibility.
So I guess my question is, so like, there's a set group of students that can only take that course, but even though it could be offered other times of the year for all students, but there's only a set group of students can take that course during that time?
We have one designated GATE course. That's just for the GATE kids.
Okay, thank you.
Again, thank you. You gave us lots of information as you stimulated a lot of questions. Appreciate the thoroughness of your report. We now move to information items in business services. Are there any public comments on this monthly budget report?
Unreceived.
Thank you. Mr. Dixon?
Thank you, President Vickers. Tonight before you is our monthly financial report through the end of September. So it's really just showing the start of school year, the first three months. You'll note that the trend of revenues and expenditures are right in line with what we'd expect. The one thing I would like to call out on this report, however, and call your attention to is on page five of twenty-three, and it's showing the cash flow. And if you look at the bottom diagram, it gives a good visual representation of our fund balance over the course of the year. Now, historically, we've had to borrow from ourselves around this time of year to meet our cash flow needs, because as you can see, we don't get our first big, large property tax payment in terms of revenue until December. So that's why you see on that cash flow, it bumps way up then, and then the next one in April. If you notice, this year, we don't have these, this line, the blue line is current year, the red is, is previous year. So these past two years is the first time since I've been here, at least, where we've had enough in our fund balance. So when we say we have a healthy fund balance, this is what I'm referring to. We have enough fund balance. We do not have to temporarily borrow from ourselves to meet our cash flow needs. So I just wanted to point that out because I think it's a good visual representation. I know we say we're healthy fiscally and we're a strong fund balance, but I think this shows it. And it shows over the course of the year and how it's been managed. So I present this to you for tonight and happy to take any questions. Um, and it shows that over the course of the year and how it's been managed. So um, I present this to you for tonight and happy to take any questions.
Board members have questions?
Uh, thanks, Mr. Dixon. Is some of the, the funding that's coming through for the school lunch program, like in our cafeteria fund contributing to the more positive fund balances? Cause I know we used to take kind of a loss on that program, so to speak.
Yeah, good question. So in terms of general fund contributions to Fund thirteen, yes, it's, uh, not having to do a contribution to the nutrition program helps. Um, now historically, that was only around two hundred and fifty to four hundred thousand dollar range. Um, so it's not significant. Um, but I would just point out, this is only highlighting general funds. So this is just Fund O one. So you're not seeing any of the impacts other than the transfers to the other funds. So it does reflect the full picture for general fund.
Any other questions for Mr. Dixon? Any student questions? Thank you. We have a next uh, information items, human resources, report a first quarter of uniform complaints for the Williams case settlement. Any public comment on this?
No.
Thank you.
We've seen, we have received no complaints.
No complaints. Thank you. Uh, section nine, information items and instruction. Our first is the A, the summer lead program proposal for two thousand and twenty-four. Any public comment on this item?
No.
Thank you. Dr. Mayberry?
Thank you. I'd like to invite up Dr. Kennerberg. She's going to share a little bit about the summer lead program uh, as well as the cost of that and any potential shifts we would want to do next year, should we want to continue it in the, uh, following summer. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you so much for allowing me to join you tonight to share with you a brief review of our summer lead program. The lead program launched in two thousand and twenty-one as part of our district's pandemic recovery plan. The program to date has been fully funded by COVID relief grant funds, which we have now exhausted because we had a really good time this summer and we spent out all of the money. So there will be an impact to the general fund if this program continues in summer of two thousand and twenty-four. So tonight I'll be going over some of the more programmatic and technical aspects of the program so that you are well-versed in all of the staffing and um, budget considerations and everything that it would take to continue this program for another year. A bit of background on LEAD in summer two thousand and twenty-three, as we've discussed previously, we had a total of four hundred and eighteen participants across sixty courses, and this was provided to students in grades one through twelve and ran over a span of two weeks. For our elementary and middle school students, many of them stayed for the full day program. So that meant that they came at eight in the morning and they took courses until two thirty. And from there, they had the option to then do further expanded learning with the Boys and Girls Club, but it really truly was a full-day camp experience for our students. And we did have many, many students uh, take advantage of all six potential enrollments. So they had the opportunity to explore six distinct courses and develop some new interests and passions. The goals of the LEAD program are skill development and enhancement. We want our students on campus to engage and make those really critical social connections, both with their peers and with the trusted adults on campus. And finally, confidence and empowerment. The great thing about the LEAD program is it really allows all students to thrive and to shine because they're able to select courses that align with their areas of interest and they're really able to uh, uh, excel in the areas in which they choose. So it was great to walk the campus and see really inclusive classroom environments and all children really shining in these various enrichment activities. So when we look at our elementary and middle school program, which is really where the vast majority of our enrollments are, we had a hundred and eighteen course sections, which resulted in over sixteen hundred course enrollment. So that's the seats that were filled in each class added together would be over sixteen hundred. So three hundred and eighty-three participants in our elementary and middle school program. That's an increase of about a hundred students from the summer prior. So our students from two thousand and twenty-two came back and they brought some friends with them this year. When we look at our program expenditures, you can see the bulk of the funds are spent on certificated and classified salaries and benefits. That is a cost that is going to continue to increase as salaries increase over time. Uh, we also partnered with some additional uh, staff, namely the strategic kids program, and we hired strategic kids to teach approximately eight distinct courses, and that was really to meet the demand of our clientele. We wanted to be able to have a broad range of course offerings. So where we saw that there were areas that we know are high interest for students such as chess, but we didn't have any of our teachers wanting to teach chess. That's where we filled in those gaps to really ensure that every student was able to access a course that matched their interests and we definitely filled all of our classes. We had waitlists for several of our classes as well. So definitely the course offerings were appreciated and students enrolled. We also had a partnership with Launchpad Therapy. Those are our occupational therapists. You heard Dr. Dr. Hatchell speak about how fine and gross motor continue to be areas of need. So Launchpad came in and taught what is called a handwriting class, but it actually encompasses all motor skills. So the kids are out there with slime and giant balls and obstacle courses. And it's really a favorite of our uh, families. And some students actually took that same course three times because they loved it that much. So hopefully those kids have really exceptional fine motor skills this year. Uh, we also partnered with Boys and Girls Club to help us do some social facilitation. We offer the students lunch, um, since they are their full day as well as a break with a snack. So the Boys and Girls Club really helped facilitate some structured games during that time and also really helped to build that sense of community. And they also pushed into some of our classes to help assist our teachers with special projects. We also were thrilled to partner with Stacy Vena's School Well Yoga Program. The yoga program continues to be um, a very popular course. She had upwards of thirty students in some of her sections and she practices not only yoga, but teaches the kids mindfulness techniques to assist them in their self-regulation. And rounding out our um, partnerships, we also had crossing guard services and of course, transportation. Because we wanted to make sure that since this program is offered free to all of our Laguna Beach Unified Students, that we were addressing any potential barriers and transportation, we acknowledge could be a potential barrier that could hinder kids from being able to access this program. So we were very happy to be able to offer that service and we had many, many students and families take advantage of the transportation services this year. So our grand total was approximately two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars for this two-week program. To show you a comparison, our summer school programs at K twelve rounded out to a little bit over three hundred thousand dollars this summer.
What strategic kids? You have a line there, strategic kids. What, what is that?
Yes, strategic kids taught approximately eight classes for us.
And what did they teach?
They taught all of our field sports. They taught chess. They taught origami. They taught Lego Star Wars and they taught um, and I believe the Harry Potter Star Wars, um, Harry Potter Lego storytelling course also, and they also taught a class in speech and debate. It's fun. And their staff were wonderful. So we were really thrilled to welcome them back. And I think I forgot one. I think we also offered magic this year as well. And cartooning. So we really got all of the bases covered because we don't have any teachers on staff who are, you know, really skilled magicians and were able to jump in and teach that class. So we were lucky to have community partners to work with us on that. So if the program is to continue at the direction of the board, the recommendation would be to set aside funds in the amount of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars from our general fund. This is taking into account the potential for the program to grow. This doesn't mean this will be the exact amount that will be spent next summer, but thinking that the program has tended to grow exponentially each summer and as well as some of the additional and rising costs that I just described, um, with staffing salaries continuing to increase and things like that. Our recommendation is to set aside three hundred and fifty thousand dollars were this program to continue in summer two thousand and twenty-four. And that's the end of the program review, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Board members, you have questions?
I, I should know this, but I'm wondering for this past summer and going forward, um, what are the fees that parents do or could pay that would cover part of the cost? Or do we, is it the effort is just to keep it as nominal as possible?
Right. So the spirit of the program to date has been that it's free for all families in Laguna, but of course, that's a decision that you know, the board would make in whatever direction you provide. I'm sure that we could build a program around that.
The other question I have is whether or not, I mean, like I know all of my son's friends did this. So I know a lot about the programs, but I don't know a lot about all of the specifics. Do we, since it's a summer program and kids are there for fun, do we do any sort of like evaluations of the classes? Do the kids, I mean, the parents love it. Their kids are gone for two weeks, right? And like, it's, no, I mean, not gone, like they don't want them at home, but gone in the sense that they have structured time for two weeks. So um, I'm just wondering how we check on what we're doing and figure out which things we want to continue to do or not do.
Absolutely. And I love the idea of doing a survey of all of the students um, at the end of the year as well. We did capture student voice um, through video this year. Our assistant uh, TOSA who helped us out, Sarah Benson, went actually class to class and interviewed students about what they liked about the program. So we collected some qualitative data through a representative sample, but that's a great idea to survey all of the students um, and build that into their date next year. So we did send out a, a family survey and I could tell that the parents definitely consulted their students. I could tell by their um, written answers because they were embedding a lot of quotes. So they, they consulted with them as to what they liked and what their recommendations for the future um, may or may not be. But I love the idea of continuing to capture the student perspective.
Thanks, Number Perry. I had two questions and then I'll uh, yield the rest of the time to other board members. One is on uh, food services. Is there any cost to food that's not accounted for? Cause we have transportation and salary and benefits and materials.
We recovered all of the food costs this summer. Yes, I thought. So that was at no cost to the district.
Um, this is a little um, more- I, I want a little feedback on whether there's a site burden to having these programs operate through the summer. I know we were so excited for all the things that we did throughout the summer, extended school year and then the LEAD program. But I'm wondering if the pace is sustainable every summer. Meaning do our administrators and teachers and staff and facilities teams, when our campuses are operating on a more year-round basis? Do you have any feedback um, either now or later on? How we address that? And same with teachers. I would say, you know, I, I'm a teacher. I get really excited to teach something new and then I think, gosh, why did I sign up to do that? Um, so I'm just wondering if there's any impact to our current core programs that you can address, or maybe there is none.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's minimal. Um, and we found a way to, as we always do for summer programming, to balance it between the school sites. And so we, you know, we're moving forward, we would continue to maintain it here. Um, but obviously it would flow around depending on the construction. So if we had some big construction projects, that's how we've always handled summer school. So we bring in um, kind of teams to clean so that it's not just the custodians on site that are being responsible, you know, responsible for cleaning. We actually kind of do it as a team effort. So they move around and um, and kind of uh, tackle it as a kind of a larger project. So um, I can say, yes, they'd love it when we rotate summer school out of the elementary schools between El Moro and TOW so that one school gets a break when they have some time. And so that, we have to have that as a consideration when we look at where we put programming. Um, but we were able to really kind of isolate it and run it really well here. And I think, you know, we can do that again and the site can, can manage it that way. Uh, the reason that we built in a little bit of extra um, funding, one is for potential expansion, but two, to your point around just staff time, uh, it takes an inordinate amount of staff time and we want to make sure that we have enough funding in there to balance it. So it's not the burden being placed just on one kind of administrator or one person who's running it. Um, Randy Beckley did a fantastic job. Um, I know that uh, uh, Betsy could, you know, was saying her praises. I mean, at one point she was almost concierge service, talking to the student about what class they really wanted to take. Um, handing the, literally the phone was being handed over to the child from the parent. Um, and we want to make sure that we can provide that to the extent that we can, but also, you know, want to make sure it's realistic. So uh, as we need to add more time to it, we want to make sure that the budget captures that. Um, the reason we're bringing it to you sort of early is that um, and it doesn't require necessarily, you know, a vote because you won't vote on the budget until June, but if there's interest and the board wants us to continue to move forward the program, we need to be able to kind of know that that's an interest of the board so that we can start kind of that planning process now. Cause it takes that long for us to let parents know. Parents want to know well in advance. They can plan vacations around it because they want to be here if we're going to offer it. Cause they know their students can be a part of it and they really enjoyed it. So we want to be able to kind of get out as early as possible. So that's why we're bringing it as early as we can. But we, we think we can handle it uh, at uh, Thurston for another year and when then we'll, we would reconsider again at the end of next year and say, do we want to give Thurston a break and move it somewhere else? Um, whether it be the high school or uh, one of the elementary schools, um, you know, and rotate the summer school program around that. So.
And our planning schedule really starts around January. So because it, it does take a lot of planning to execute this program, our coordinator um, puts in approximately a hundred hours before the program even launches. As, and our teachers put in twelve hours of prep time um, prior to the launch of the program as well for every single class they teach. So if they're teaching six classes, you know, they're putting in quite a bit of time on the front end. So we want to have a, as long of a runway as possible.
So we have four weeks of ESY of extended school year and then two weeks of this program. So we have uh, one or multiple campuses operating for uh, six weeks out of the eight or ten weeks. How, how long is summer?
About nine.
Nine. Okay, thanks, President Vickers. Okay, that helps me frame it in terms of our long-term burden, because remember this was born out of a COVID recovery. Right? That's what these dollars were for. To bring student social, fun, academic enrichment, learning loss solutions. So I think we need to think of it in a different light, um, moving away from those dollars. Um, so I'm trying to wrap my head around that. Thank you.
Did you have questions?
Yes, I did. Thank you for that. I'm also trying to wrap my head around it. Um, I heard nothing but praise for the LEAD program. And would love to be able to continue it and would say yay, but I don't know what else are we going to give something up if we do that. And I was also thinking it, it kind of increased by a hundred from one year to the next. If it increases by a hundred again, that's going to be close to five hundred kids. Are we gonna? You, you, I'm sure we don't know yet if we're going to cut it off or we're gonna let everybody come. I also wondered when somebody is put on a waiting list, do they usually take another class or do they not come?
They usually take another class. And so that's kind of the concierge service that Dr. Valoria was speaking to. Randy Betsy literally worked with every family one-on-one to talk through alternative options if students didn't get their first choice and literally was speaking to the students themselves and giving full course outlines and descriptions and seeing what resonated with them. And then she worked really tirelessly as families had plans change and there were cancellations. She did a lot of work moving students off of the waitlist so that they were able to access those classes. So all of that just takes um, quite a bit of time on the front end of the program. But of course, you know, we want to serve our students and make sure everybody's going to have the best possible experience. You know, that they can. So we will of course, put in the work, but there is a lot of time investment in that.
And no one was turned away, correct?
No, we did not turn anyone away.
And, and what was the average class size?
The average class size was between twelve and fifteen, although we did have a few courses that were extremely popular, um, where we were able to accommodate closer to twenty students and add an instructional aid to provide some additional support.
Oh, good.
Cause we really wanted to be able to accommodate everybody and give them what they wanted. So we, we had some conversations with some teachers who were willing to work with us because they, they wanted the kids to, you know, have access to their course and they were just extremely popular. Every summer, there's a couple of different courses that are just like the it class of the summer and that was confections this year.
Ah, well, I would love to be able to offer this. I just don't know what other repercussions there are for spending that amount of money. I guess we'll talk about it.
I have a comment. Uh, I totally support uh, using general fund dollars to, for planning purposes uh, for next summer. And I know that Jeff will, when he's putting the budget together, that uh, he will either find the money or we will cut it back at that point in time. But I think for planning purposes, the team needs to know where our direction is. Uh, but it can also be- But it can also be controlled by the budget and the budget comes to us as far as so that it fits into our budget for next year that we're not in the red.
I am very supportive of continuing this program. When we get input from people besides just praise for this program, I had basically begging to do it again because it was such a great offering. I did have a question, a couple of questions. The summer school program is a distinct amount of time from this, so students could do both. And just a ballpark figure of the number of students that did the summer school program compared to the lead program.
Sure, we had 125 students at the elementary and middle school program and approximately 130 students in the high school credit recovery program, which also had our new offering this, this year, which was our jumpstart Algebra I and jumpstart English nine class, which was not a credit recovery program, but really a bridge program to help students as they transitioned from eighth grade to ninth grade who were identified as potentially needing extra support. So meeting with those students and setting them up for success through a course preview and pre-teaching some of the essential skills. So those two programs were combined this year.
Thank you. I would just may comment that programs like this have been offered in the past and then for reasons that they went away, it wasn't brand new to this district. There were times where we had summer school enrichment programs with lots of fun activities and classes for kids. Not as expansive as this, not as interesting as this. But we do have some money identified in our ending fund balance that would be at board discretion.
Correct, and I was just going to bring up budgetarily wise, when you look at the multi-year, when you're looking at, do we have to take something away? I know I heard that the multi-year shows a surplus of over 350,000 going forward. So you wouldn't necessarily be taking programs away. However, you would be assigning that 350,000, so it would no longer show as a surplus or available. That would be the only impact at this point. And the timeliness of this is also not just good for their planning, but you would also see this reflected in first interim financials that the board selects to go forward. So you get a true picture of how we would project this in the out years. And I think that would be really helpful as well.
I know we can't vote on this because it's not an action item, but consensus.
Yeah, I just want to make one more comment in support of this. And first of all, uh, it's obvious, but research also supports the fact that the drop in learning during the summer happens for all students because they take time off. So having an enrichment program in the middle of the summer is great for students. It's hard to assess because it's a self-selected group of students who do it. The parents who, and the students who do very well in school may be more likely to do this. But if we're opening it, you know, and therefore they do well in school. But if we're opening it up as a free program for lots of students, then I see no downsides to doing this and I strongly support continuing the funding. I do think we should evaluate it next year at the same time. I think we should get that feedback from students so we know what kinds of courses they're liking and not liking. But I just want to say that I, you know, support continuing to do this. I think it's great, you know, these kind of enrichment programs are very important for student learning and equity.
Um, I have one last, like two questions. Is transportation provided both ways for the students?
Yes.
Okay, and then how were the courses like determined? Like, why are you offering like the sensory class versus like spoken word? Like, how do you determine which class you're offering?
We actually, that's a great question. And we actually offered a spoken word and a sensory class. So we had a speech and debate class for third through fifth graders. That was very popular this year, so they were doing a lot of spoken word practice. Our, the reason that we brought in our handwriting camp, which focuses on fine and gross motor skills, was because we heard from our school teams that that was a real area of need that they were seeing in kindergarten, first, second, and even up to third grade. So we actually integrated occupational therapy into our academic summer school program as well. Every single student in grades kindergarten, or kindergarten through third grade got OT services as part of their daily instructional routine. And then with lead, we wanted to extend that to all students, anybody who was interested. So parents signed their kids up, um, really because the parents are seeing at home that this is an area of need for their students. And so based on the enrollment, we actually had to add a third section of that class because it was so popular. And we wanted to make sure that students who wanted to take that course had the ability to. So that's how they're selected. In terms of our strategic kids classes, we look at the courses that are offered after school through El Moro and TOW, who are also run by strategic kids. And we look at the most popular classes there and those are the ones that we offer. They, they tell us their enrollment and they tell us the ones that they do over and over again. And I didn't believe them when they said chess was supremely popular. I thought, really? But chess buildup in a snap. So we really tried to meet the needs of the students. And then teachers actually self-select what they're going to teach. So teachers are teaching their own areas of passion. So a third grade teacher might have a particular penchant for science or for baking or for art or for teaching kindness. We had Mrs. Bamer taught one called Super Fun Glittery Crafts. And she also taught a second class called Kindness Rocks, because those are her two passions. So it's really nice because the students get to see the teachers in a different kind of environment. It's more relaxed and the teachers are sharing their passion with the students. And so that is really great and kind of bringing them together and helping to connect them through these shared interests.
We have a consensus, do you think? Okay.
I just wanted to make my views known. I think this is a great program and we need to continue it. I think what you just mentioned, Dr. Canterbury, about how all these teachers are coming up with creative ideas. It should contender, I, I don't, I don't support the district fully paying for it. I think as the COVID dollars run out, this is our time to try something different, meaning have parents pay for it. So enroll just like you would in a regular class. Um, the rest of the board might not share my views, but I think, you know, 338 students is a lot of students, but it's still only 14% of our population. And we know that salary costs and benefits costs continue to go up. We might even have increased enrollment because it's a really popular program. But I just worry about, you know, the rising cost of that and other programs like we're going to hear next. And think that it is really valuable to parents and I think parents pay for things that are of value. I also think that we could come up with a, a way that it's subsidized. Maybe our unduplicated pupils aren't paying for it so that it is open to everybody. And by providing food and transportation, we really level the playing field so that everybody can get here and be fed and it's the full day. Um, but I, I think, you know, that, um, based on the, the, the feedback that I've heard from parents, they are willing to pay for it. So I guess my view is because it's this year, the funding has run out, this would be a great time to make a change versus going back on something. As a board, when we offer one thing and then we change it the next year, sometimes that doesn't go over very well. So that's, that's my two cents. I'm happy to be the dissenting person on this, but I do think it's one.
Yeah, it, I, I don't necessarily disagree with that. I think one of the issues is that some parents do it because it is a free enrichment program for a couple of weeks. And that is one of the reasons that enrollment is, you know, so many kids want to do it. I also think that there are parents who are willing to pay for it. My issue is I just don't want any student not doing it because there's suddenly a fee. Because, you know, it is one way of creating equity by providing enrichment to everybody regardless of ability to pay. So I would want to keep that in mind and also keep it nominal. I mean, I don't, I don't mind charging a fee, but I would want it to be a fee that still compelled people to want to bring their kids here for a couple of weeks.
I'm not sure I'm comfortable with that as far as it's public, it's a public school offering. And we don't charge for, for education during the school year. I just, I, I see, I hear your point, but I'm not sure that I would support that.
I looked at a couple, like I was looking to see where this exists in other places. And you guys are the experts, probably know where this exists. But even locally in Irvine, through their Public Schools Foundation, and it's amazing as well. It's probably not as amazing as ours and teacher-led, but those are programs that, that families pay for, right? For, um, high-quality programming over the summer. Um, maybe there's other examples of districts that are picking it up. This is probably a new thing since we all are having our COVID dollars run out either this year or next summer. So, um, but I hear your point, President Pickers.
Superintendent, what was the percentage of our families who said they were financially challenged?
Uh, it ranges anywhere between 16 to 20%.
I hear all the points. Looking from the student point of view, it's, it's really good for our students, all of our students. And if, if we can, if we have enough money to offer it again without paying anything, I'm for that.
Have we also played around with the notion of donations? Because since this is such a popular program, I'm sure there'd be tons of parents willing to donate. It could still be free to all families, but I'm sure a lot of parents would be willing to donate and that would at least have some sort of income to support these programs while still having the option to have kids go for free.
Again, I think we're getting a little bit into the weeds and kind of some of this. I, I will tell you, I think the value of the program, the reason we're recommending that we continue to fund it ourselves is when we have the funding to do it. We wouldn't bring that forward to you if we didn't. Um, you know, we have ending fund balance in excess of $13 million. So, uh, to be able to provide this for a year or another year after this at no charge and continue to evaluate program, I think is kind of what we're asking as an option. Um, I think this is all, this will be our third year of lead. Fourth year of lead?
Third year. Well, this will be our fourth year we've had.
Yeah, yeah. Fourth year. Um, so I think, you know, giving us an opportunity to see, and we would then, if it determines, you know, one's not cost-effective, we wouldn't recommend it to, to continue. But we believe at this point to break even on funding around food, to be able to provide this level of service to our community while also having an opportunity to really enrich our students. Kids speak with their feet. It's what they do in the high school and that's what they do in these programs too. And so programs kind of ebb and flow depending on the interest. And we can see chess goes up and then we see other classes go down. And that's when we start to say, but realize that class isn't going to run and we're not going to offer it. We had to do that our first year where we, we had some great ideas and some of them didn't come to fruition. So, um, we, we want to continue to try to offer that and see where it heads. And then we'll come back, uh, next year and, and make another recommendation to the board. And I may include, you know, donations, et cetera. But gathering money is, it just makes, that adds more staff time. And I think we need to recognize that. The goal is to try to be as lean and mean as possible. When we start taking in cash and start managing that, it, it adds a whole nother layer that we have to navigate, which will increase staff time. And so we want to limit it as much as possible in terms of the impact on staff time while we're still can even provide the service that we can. So, um, if I feel like we have consensus to kind of move forward, Jeff can recognize it in the first interim. And then, um, that will give us opportunity to start working and we'll give you regular updates as we go along. And then we'll kind of circle back at the end of next year when we give you an update as to where it's at and make a recommendation then as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the presentation. Thank you.
Here, our next item under information items on instruction is B preschool program report. Is there a public comment on this item? No, thank you. Are you introducing chat or?
Yeah, thank you, thank you. Yeah, we're going to present to the, thank you this evening, we're going to present to the board uh, an update around a preschool programming, uh, and some plans that we've been, uh, working on for several years. Primarily, we've been focused more on the TK the last year, expanding that to be full day after-school programming. And now that that is, has slowly been growing, we're trying to move our focus to the, to the preschool need that we have, especially around the area of providing a full inclusion preschool for our students with the most severe disabilities. Uh, so I've asked, uh, Ms. Kim, Ms. Johnson, our director of early learning, as well as Ms. White, our director of special education, to come up and present, uh, Ms. White. Uh, Ms. Johnson has presented this before, uh, but Ms. White, uh, is one who actually started our preschool program many years ago and has the historical knowledge of, of where it fits in and what the next steps are and what things we've been trying to do to provide and kind of Band-Aid some of the inclusional parts, but also what we really need to do to be in compliance. And so, uh, they're going to give a presentation on that as well as include some of the costs. Uh, so we can, uh, look at some next steps together. Thank you.
Good evening, thanks so much for allowing us to, uh, the time to present a plan moving forward with the development of a Laguna Beach Unified School District preschool plan. Irene and I have been lucky to collaborate together since it falls within both of our areas. When we take a look at the Laguna Beach, uh, goals and priorities, the development of a preschool plan would fall across all three goals. Um, by creating an early learning preschool program, we're going to be building on our students readiness skills while developing social emotional skills in order to have confident and school-ready students, allowing inclusion opportunities for our students on I E Ps as well, too. We need to be able to offer our preschool students on I E Ps an individualized program that allows for opportunities of inclusion throughout their day with age-appropriate peers and developmental levels. We need to, um, be in compliance with both state and federal guidelines. And these opportunities, um, would be available as a district if we created our own preschool program. We would like to take ownership of our students, um, that meets the needs of all of our students across neurotypical and neurodiverse needs. We would offer a full day of care, uh, with highly qualified staff and develop a program and curriculum that aligns with our E D I results. Um, I know we have seen in the past, our E D, E D I results show most of our students are kindergarten-ready. But as we've heard from both of our presentations prior, we do have some areas of need, especially in the area of fine motor skills and some of our social emotional regulation. So we could create a preschool program that meets those needs and by collaborating with both our TK and K teachers to develop goals and objectives to really work on the readiness skills of our TK and K students. We want to look at the child as a whole, looking at both developmental, pre-academic, social, emotional needs as well, too. So then they can successfully transition, um, to the next level.
Okay. Yep, Irene's turn. Thank you. So improving our services has always been a top priority. And the truth is that it's been increasingly difficult, difficult to address our, our gaps during and post-COVID. So our current preschool program lacks integration opportunities. It's no big secret. We've had partnerships in the past with Laguna Beach Presbyterian, um, which is a faith-based program, which has its own set of problems and also Boys and Girls Club in the past. But it's only been a Band-Aid. We know that students who only learn and interact with peers with special needs will have limited exposures. As you are fully aware, the label special needs can have a stigma or negative connotation. Being in an isolated special education needs program reinforces this stigma for both our students and our families. Social relationships are critical in building those foundational skills. Our students need more opportunities to interact, to learn, to play, to communicate, not less. We also know what the research says about peer influences and a rich social environment. In the area of academics, we know that exposure to developmentally appropriate curriculum is critical. Oftentimes in a special education classroom, only setting, the bar gets lowered, not intentionally. But when, um, you have a group of students that are all struggling to learn and they don't have those typical peer models, um, it can be quite difficult. Over the years, we have found that for some of our kids, transition to TK in kindergarten has been difficult. If we provided them with a preschool experience fully integrated, we won't have those struggles when they transition to TK and Kinder. And last but not least, we've talked about state and federal compliance requirements. We continue, quite honestly, to be out of compliance. We are not serving our kids in the least restrictive environment. And, and these kids deserve to have that opportunity. Again, we've bandaged it as we'll continue to do. But certainly I think we feel really strongly that this is just a wonderful opportunity for us and for our students.
So what is our vision moving forward? We would like to create, uh, two general education preschool classrooms, serving up to 36 students, both, uh, general education and special education students, anywhere from 2.9 years to four years old. The location would be at El Moro. We have been working with Dr. Hatchell on potential spaces there. Uh, the preschool full-day class would run from 7:30 to 4:00. Uh, we would also move our special day class that's currently at top of the world to El Moro. So we would have three preschool classes there. Um, this is just a sample of some of the curriculum and trainings we, um, would implement currently. Our special day class uses Frog Street, so we'd like to use that in our general education classes as well, too. So we have, um, collaboration amongst that. Zoo phonics is just a great, um, interactive, um, curriculum for students to get up and move and learn some of their phonics and their letters, handwriting with. handwriting without tears. We currently use in our younger grades to work on some of those fine motor and handwriting skills. Scholastic is a great curriculum to bring home as well. So parents are involved in the classroom, knowing what they're learning and talking about. We would ask that all of our staff are CPR and first aid-trained and along with the crisis-prevented intervention training CPI. This is just an example of a daily schedule. What we're trying to do with this schedule is balance out some structured activities and unstructured activities so we can really work on those, developing that whole child again. So we're looking at some of those pre-readiness skills, but we're also looking at play and developmental skills. We want students to come into school with their first school experience, having fun and really love school. And so you can do that with a balance of different activities. And pick-up and drop-off is usually flexible in a preschool program as well, too. So legal requirements for licensing. So we would be looking at Title 22 licensing, which is through the Department of Social Services, their childcare licensing program. There's a couple of requirements. One would be an online orientation, which has been completed. And then the next would be to fill out an application and apply for licensing. And once that application's been approved, then licensing would need to come out for an inspection. There is a yearly fee based on enrollment. So it would be approximately $484 initially, and then yearly it would be $242. Ratio requirements, once again, would be under Title 22. And so you would be looking at one teacher to 12 children, adding an aide into the classroom. Depending on the qualifications of the aide, could bring up that ratio to 15 or 18 children in the classroom. When the students are napping, the ratio increases to 24. So that allows both the teacher and the aide to take a lunch break or a break. So what would we need in terms of staffing? So if we had two general education classrooms, we would need a early childhood education teacher in each classroom. So that'd be two total. And then we'd also need an assistant in each classroom. Both of those would be full-time positions. For our special education program, we would continue to staff at the same level depending on the number of students in our special day class program. So we took a look at some of our community partners and their tuition rates. Now, this is just really one rate kind of per school. A lot of our community partners have multiple tuition schedules depending on age of the children or how many hours a day to go or days per week. But we were just kind of looking at a comparable version to what we would be offering. And then we looked at some unified school districts and what their tuition rate would be as well. And so our proposal would be $1,200 a month for the eight and a half hours of care five days a week. And, okay, next one. So how did we kind of come up with that $1,200? We did look at how much it would cost to hire a teacher with salary and benefits. There is a little bit of a range because depending on what level the teacher comes in at and what benefit package they choose. Same thing with the assistant in the classroom as well. So total staff cost, this is per class, would be $150,000 to $180,000 a year. If we collected $1,200 a month at 15 children, we would be also at $180,000 per year. So in terms of like our next step would be to apply for our license. Once you're approved for a license, then they would need to come out for an inspection. And so you would need to set up a classroom for them to come inspect. We would need to create job descriptions for our recruitment, create a handbook and a admissions agreement, which is also part of the application process as well, and advertise and enroll for students. And a lot of preschools start this process in the new year, around January, February. In terms of some of our facilities and some of those needs, we would need to move our special day class from El Moro to Top of the World. We would need to do some bathroom upgrades at El Moro. So we had preschool-sized toilets and sinks and the appropriate number of toilets and sinks for children. Some playground fencing. So we had an enclosed grass space for our preschool students. Purchase some classroom furniture, outdoor equipment, and manipulatives in the classroom. And I believe, Jeff, you had said some of the costs would be included in the state preschool program grant?
Yeah, just to kind of build on what Ms. Johnson's saying is that a lot of those changes you've seen in our facilities master plan presentations for both Top of the World and El Moro. But what's important right now, too, is beyond the existing current state facility program, there were additional dollars. And I believe that Gloria talked about it last time, the $490 billion, almost half a billion dollars, $490 million available for TK and preschool facilities. Based on our early estimates, we would be eligible for roughly a million dollars based on the plans that we have in our facilities master plan to do these facility projects. And we would expect that money would be available. It's been delayed, but we believe it'll begin to be available again in '24, '25, and it will go quickly. So it's something we're doing great because we've already got through the master plan, and we're going to eventually get that for approval. And then once we get into design, we can get in line for those additional funds.
Just a couple of closing remarks before any questions. I've been fortunate to serve as your special education director for almost two decades. Long time. We have successfully, with the Board of Education as well as our leadership team, provided quality preschool services for our students and our families. We have a program that we have been incredibly proud of. We've worked diligently to be able to create those partnerships to provide those integration experiences, work with our TK and kindergarten teachers. But as we know, a preschool kid doesn't necessarily have a whole lot in common a three-year-old with a five-year-old. Not only have we had no litigation to date, our program, you may not know this, is perceived as one of the best in the county. Last year, I took our preschool team to some visits. We visited Newport Mesa, Irvine, Saddleback Valley Unified School District. And I say that I completely and 100% totally understand when our families are resisting a placement change recommendation to another program, something more restrictive. Our facilities are beautiful. Our qualified, our staff are very much committed. We have a welcoming learning environment, and our community partnerships allow us to provide a defensible program. During and post-COVID, as I mentioned to you, it really changed how we're able to integrate our kiddos. And personally, I've always taken pride in the fact that our district allows us the ability on an annual basis. And it really is the expectation of our superintendent that we're constantly evaluating programs and we're taking a look how we can do better. This is such an exciting time for the school district. And I personally want to thank you for your commitment to our littles because I know, because I've had conversations with many of you, that that early intervention matters, makes such a big difference in the trajectory of our students. So thank you for the opportunity to share tonight, and we're super, super excited.
Thank you both very, very much. And we'll have board questions, please. I have a couple of questions. And preschools that operate in town, one of the issues for them always is insurance. And so how does the insurance play out for us on a fee-based program that we provide?
Would fall under the district insurance.
Okay, that covers it. Simple. And in the, if we, if we're going to plan this for the fall of '24, then we're using existing classrooms and preparing those to be in compliance for Title 22. Then the future would look at new classrooms? Okay. Then... Do we have questions? I have a couple of comments that I would like to make, but I'll have your questions precede that.
Yeah, and the short-term implementation, Ms. Johnson. The El Moro location, you mentioned bathroom modernizations and playground fencing. Can you give us, I think everything we do, we know should be high-quality, but give us a sense of this interim rollout without proper facilities? Where are we, where are we really planning to do this? Where would they play? Where would they be walking to go to the bathroom? I know our special ed preschool at Top of the World even has struggled with getting those kiddos up to the playground. It's a long walk and getting them to the bathrooms. I just don't want to recreate more of that. I want to make sure we're doing it right. If you could elaborate on that, be helpful.
Well, there's a couple of areas that we could, you know, create three classrooms at El Moro. So I definitely would need to work closely with Dr. Hatchell on that. But most of the classrooms have a green grass space outside of them. So if we could enclose that space with three classrooms together, that would allow some outdoor space. And then we would need to work with our TK and K teachers in terms of recess and lunch schedule to also use the playground there at times when they're not using it. In terms of bathroom space at El Moro and the auditorium, there are two adult restrooms in there. And so we could take one of those adult restrooms and put two little toilets in there and two little sinks. And so make a one bathroom that would allow enough toilets and sinks for the amount of students we'd like to have.
And then may I ask a second question? Okay. We mentioned the two in the proposal. We showed two gen ed classrooms, one special ed preschool classroom, which I think we'd looked at the enrollment. Correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. White. It's like around six on average in preschool. Is that about the right number?
It does vary. We've been small the last couple of years, but we do have quite a few assessments pending. So we are anticipating that our preschool program could grow up to 10 to 12 kids this school year.
So is the intent, Dr. Johnson, Dr. or Mrs. Johnson?
No, just Mrs. or just Kim.
Thanks, thanks, Kim. Is the intention, because you have two on here. I know we need to integrate. So my question was, why do we show two? Can we integrate with one? Or was there other thinking behind there that I'm not aware of?
Well, when you want to create a full inclusion classroom, you want not a cooperative class where you have half and half or looking at an inclusion opportunity, so more general education peers. And so we would want to create two so we could utilize two different spaces to split our special day class students. So we really have more models for them.
Especially, I guess, if the preschool program grows, so there may be as many as 10 or 12. So that would be a lot to put in one class.
Correct, correct. You would basically have just about half or more than half being special needs.
Right, and that wouldn't, that's not exactly what we're looking for. I think it's really important that we be in compliance and that we do the right thing for our little folks.
Any other board questions?
I just have a comment again. I'm grateful for Mrs. White's 20 years and her expertise. And I'm just very proud of what we do in her area. I'm also wondering, what's the time that these kids would arrive and leave the site?
The program would be open 7:30 to 4:00. So oftentimes in a preschool program, you see a little bit of flexibility with pick-up and drop-off depending on what the parent's needs for care is. Some of the students might come with their siblings as well if they have siblings at the school.
And how safe is the location? El Moro, I'm always scared with that, you know, nice open park next door that has all this access to it. And are these in a safe location? Would this be a real safe location?
I think the school is very safe. And so, you know, they would be in an enclosed classroom. The doors obviously can open, but we would want to enclose that kind of backyard space in a sense. So if they did have indoor/outdoor activities, that would be enclosed.
Thank you.
Jim, I could assure you that when the park was expanding there, that was the time that we spent meeting with all the parties interested that that was a concern and that there's, it's really separate. There really isn't access, like there used to be when the trailer park was there. Yeah, it's very right. Because we had students that lived there that came through the back gate just to come to school. But it's, I would say it's very safe. Any other board questions, comments?
I just had one other comment based on the 2023 EDI data. So thank you guys for sharing that first five data. I fully support adding general education preschool for the benefit of our special education students. I do want to differentiate, though, because I think many districts add preschool and previously added TK for very different reasons because their EDI data was not strong and kids weren't showing up for kindergarten-ready. So our 2023 EDI data, which I'm really proud of, and Kim, I think you would be too, is that we have 86% of kids coming to kindergarten-ready for kindergarten compared with 52% county-wide. So the drivers for our program, I want to be really clear what they are for me, which is this inclusion and compliance opportunity, not for needs or means-based preschool offerings to our families. I think those are met very well by the high-quality community partners that we still have offering preschool and not to address a gap in our EDI data. I think that's very strong. So I just, when I looked at it, I was really, really stoked and excited to see such strong results there. I think this will really help our special education students. I hope parents take advantage of it. Thank you.
And just one thing I'll mention about the EDI data. Irene can attest. I think my first year, when we've, when I came in, we had the EDI data that came out, and it was very, very low. Members that were on the board at the time probably recall, we were very concerned. And so Irene was tasked with getting all of our programs, local programs together that served our students and created a very robust task force to actually address those gaps. So that what you're seeing now is an outcome of all the work that we did over those many years, pulling that group together, really trying to get them to understand the things that they were probably not necessarily doing in their programs that they needed to do based off the data. And so that was a journey. And all kudos and credit goes to Irene and the work that she was able to do to kind of get that ball rolling because it was, we were very, very low. I mean, we were surprisingly low in many ways. And I think it's, again, a testament to the work our team's done. And so I am really proud of that, and Irene should be, too. I think this is really kind of our next kind of iteration as we kind of, and Irene's been patient with me. So thank you, Irene. You know, we talked about doing this a long time ago, but we were just trying to figure out, you know, what would the logistics look like and how are we going to do it? And then the ability to bring on Kim this last year is really kind of the force behind moving into this early learning side of the house where we're going to have all four-year-olds eventually. And now we have an opportunity not to have all three-year-olds, to be clear, but to be able to service a small number of students. You know, and whether we eventually allow it for staff, who knows? We can, we'll talk about that when we dive in more. This won't be the last time the board sees this conversation either because we're bringing back job descriptions and continuing to talk it through. But I think we're in the right position now to kind of move the ball forward, so.
Well, having gone to some of those meetings in the early years and seeing the data, and it wasn't, it wasn't just reaching out to the programs. It was also to get the information to parents of what their children were not experiencing, not only in maybe a short-term, few-day-a-week preschool experience, but in their homes and what needed to be done to help them to be ready to come to kindergarten. Because that certainly preceded by many years TK and the concept of TK. And I know that Irene has served the district with extreme dedication, and this is her passionate field. But I did see, to your point, Kelly, they did also point out, we do have work to do still. It was fine motor and social emotional. So for our, you know, regular preschool kids, there still are some areas that can be improved upon when they address that as program rationale. My main comment was just that with various foster kids that we had, I've lived this type of program. And what I learned from taking that on and being in that role is what early intervention does. I had no concept of how it enlarges the capabilities of children that have, don't have the same start as other children. And so it really helped me to learn the importance of what we do with these programs. So, and I experienced it through a program that was over by UCI, ICEC. And they had both special needs and they had the regular program. And so then they had the automatic ability to do the inclusion, which was remarkable to watch and to watch what it did to the kids. And the part of the program that is, addresses... And the, the part of the program that is addresses, I mean, when you address stigma, it, it is a real thing. And it does start very early. And so I just wanted to make those couple of comments, because it's, what we can offer to kids is invaluable. And I'm very much in support of this. Thank you.
Yeah, I share your reasons for supporting it also in terms of inclusion. Um, but I also want to point out that um while we do have great community partners who provide preschool, there aren't enough that provide all-day preschool. And even, I have colleagues who live outside of Laguna Beach who all come in to use their all-day preschool, because it's very hard to find all-day high-quality preschool. So I'm appreciative of the fact, of the fact that that's also part of this um for both special needs and working families.
You referring to a preschool at UCI? You referring to a preschool at UCI?
No, I have, I have colleagues who come to Laguna Beach because we have a preschool that does all day. It's hard to find.
Well, when the, the one that I used to work at, which closed, we were open from seven to six. And we had a few children who were there from seven to six. And it was, it was because the, the parents were driving to Los Angeles. I mean, it was just the, the needs. Any other comments or questions? Thank you very, very much. Get tied up in this subject. It's one of my favorites. We move to our action items. Items 10, business items. Our first is A, approval of resolution number twenty-three twelve to establish an inter-fund transfer of nine hundred thousand from the general fund to the special reserve fund for facility, facilities, repair and replacement program for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Do we have public comment on this?
No.
Thank you. Mr. Dixon?
Thank you, President Vickers. And just to remind the board, uh, the next, I'm going to be talking through three different transfers here. They are all part of the adopted budget, so this has already been accounted for. Um, however, the first one we're going to do tonight is we're recommending the board approve the transfer of nine hundred thousand from general fund to our facility repair replacement program. As a reminder, the FERP, as we call it, an acronym form, um, is designed for repairing and replacing large capital items. And some recent examples of what we've used it on are the roofing replacements at all of our sites, the large mechanical systems, our heating and air conditioning, and in some cases, large flooring projects like gym refinishing or even new floors. Um, so with that, we're asking the board to approve this transfer and we'll continue forward.
Any board questions? If not, I'd like a motion, please. Second. Any discussion? You do the roll call.
Carter, were you, buddy? Oh, thank you. Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
Member Perry? Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Malchesky?
Yeah.
President Vickers?
Next is uh item B, approval of resolution number twenty-three dash thirteen to establish an inter-fund transfer of one million two hundred thousand from the general fund to the special reserve fund for capital improvement plan for twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Uh, public comment on this?
No.
Thank you. Mr. Dixon?
Thank you. So this is another transfer from general fund, but this is to our capital improvement program, our CIP. This is also in supporting of our facilities program, but rather than looking at like deferred maintenance items like repair and replacements, the CIP has gone to support a lot of our new buildings, new fields. And some examples here at Thurston would be the, the new turf field over there and the new classroom building that was renovated down there. That was done through the um capital improvement program. And then what you've seen in our master plan presentations, the bulk of those projects, especially the new builds and modernizations, would also be targeted for our capital improvement program, just to give some examples of what those projects could look like.
Thank you. Any board questions?
Mr. Dixon, for the CIP, and when you bring back the FMP, this is just tagging on Dr. Veloy's comment on sand volleyball. Can we please see if sand volleyball courts in that plan? Thank you.
Yes, we have reached out to our designers and we're going to look at some overlay options and what it could look like.
Any other questions? If not, I'd like a motion, please. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Carter. Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
Member Perry? Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Malchesky?
Yeah.
President Vickers?
Yes.
Thank you. Item C, approval of resolution number twenty-three dash fourteen to establish an inter-fund transfer of five hundred thousand from the special reserve fund for the Aliso property reserve to the special reserve for non-capital outlay fund for twenty-three, twenty-four. Mr. Dixon?
Last one. So this, this transfer here is a bit more unique and we only started doing it in the more recent years. And essentially, we have our Aliso property reserve. And that's a reserve we maintain in case the loan, the HUD loan were ever to go default on, we had to pay the value of that loan back. Currently sits about a little over three million dollars, maybe three and a half million dollars. And that's how much is in that account. The uh Reserve for Economic Uncertainties Fund seventeen is our primary big reserve to deal with large-scale events, whether that be an emergency disaster, a change in state policy that reduces our funding, anything that would help give us a softer landing. Both are considered reserve funds as part of our community-funded differential program. So rather than move the five hundred thousand from the Aliso property reserve, which is about five hundred thousand over that amortization schedule, so we have five hundred thousand dollars more in that account than we would need, we're proposing transferring that into our Fund seventeen, so it maintains in a reserve account and further builds that account. So you get more interest on that as well.
Thank you. Any questions? So, uh, any, I'd like a motion, please. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Carter. Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
Member Perry? Member Kelly?
Yeah.
Member Malchesky?
Yeah.
President Vickers?
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, item D, approval of agreement with, I never say this right, EG Bailey LLP to provide consulting services related to the identification of potential incentives under the energy incentive program in an amount not to exceed ten thousand. Mr. Dixon?
Thank you. So ID Bailey is our current auditing firm, and you'll see them next month present our last year, the audit of our last year's financials. However, um, with the passage of the, the Federal Inflation Reduction Act, there is a requirement for auditing related services in the application and submission for funding in the Inflation Reduction Act. Um, and that's what phase one of this contract would accomplish. So the auditors would actually help us with our application process aligned to make sure that all incentives are captured with our program. And by the way, this time did really well, because we have our energy design services request for proposals out right now. So we're getting the solar designs starting to go, the electric vehicle charging stations, all of that's going to be in the works. At the same time, we want to bring along our auditors so we can pursue as much of those Inflation Reduction Act funds as possible, which we would anticipate for eligible projects at this point, could offset as much as thirty percent of the total project. So we're talking a significant amount of funding, especially with our sustainability work. Um, moving forward, there's going to be a lot of great opportunities and projects that we should be able to tap into these funds. And time is of the essence, because these funds won't last very long. So that's why Irene is here tonight. Um, and it'll fall in line with the work we're doing this year to create the sustainability projects uh and identify all funding sources, especially those outside of our general fund to support our work.
Thank you. Questions?
Mr. Dixon, what's the length of the engagement? How long do they anticipate um researching the IRA requirements and what we might be applying for?
So it's going to happen very quickly, and I would anticipate within about 12 months. And it's really going to depend on the energy projects that we design and determine with the separate uh request for proposal. Um, I should mention, in that RFP or request for proposal for the energy design services, it does require that they do work with our auditing firm in the project identification and submission for application. So this is going to happen very quickly, um, because we know, like I said, time is of the essence on getting these funds.
Any other questions? If not, if I'd like a motion, please. Any discussion? I don't know how you find all these things, Jeff, but I really appreciate all the effort that goes into uh doing this.
It's absolutely my pleasure. And Dr. Velory and I actually have many good discussions about finding different things that we can tap into.
Those resources are out there, but you didn't, you, you have to find them. I know that. So this is not a, not a roll call. Student vote? Thank you. Board members on favor? I opposed, carries five oh. Thank you. Uh, action items under instruction. A, approval of agreement between Green Schools National Network and Laguna Beach Unified. Am I?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I have my, I have an old one. Okay, so that's it. Um. Human Resources, eleven A, approval of new job description and position, District Office Assistant Four.
Thank you. Speak on behalf of uh Mr. Kyle Lynn, who's not here tonight. Uh, this is a new position under, under uh instructional services that we're looking to add uh that's been approved by CS, CSEA uh in corresponding job description to the six-ten process. Uh, this is to support the kind of expanding program that's happened over the years, primarily through the student, student services role. You know, we've talked earlier about the expanded summer programming, the family resource, we've talked about a lot recently, or the early childhood program. Um, but beyond that, um, as we know, um, when the local control funding formula idea came out, there wasn't, you know, it was local control. It's not local control anymore. We have more categorical programs than we've ever had. You know, we, we have the typical ones that we work through and through, you know, student services accountability around that. That's LCAP or Local Indicator, School Accountability Report Card, SIPSA's Dashboard Title One, Title Two, Title Four. Um, the CTIG funds, the K-12 Strong Workforce Funds, Perkins, those are the ones that are around all the time. But in the last, I don't know, five years, uh, ESFLR two, ESFLR three, uh, Educator Effectiveness Block Grant, the Universal Pre-K Kinder Improvement Block Grant, uh, the A through G Completion Improvement Grant, in-person instruction plan. We're still doing that one, uh, early, the Early Learning Opportunities Grant, that's ELOG, not to be confused with the Expanded Learning Opportunities Program, which is ELOP. Um, we have mental health program grants, the Low Performing Students Block Grant, so um safety plans. So very much evolving, um, and most of that work is done directly from our, our directors. Um, and so this would provide additional uh clerical staff uh to support them with some of this work um that they're doing, that they're doing right now. So we're, uh, CSCA, like I said earlier, has approved this. They're going to bring this forward um to the board for approval as well. Thank you.
Since I got mixed up, I did forget to ask if there's public comment on this item. No, thank you. Any board questions?
Dr. Mayberry, what's the size of the instructional services total? How many employees, yourself, directors, clerical or others?
Uh, it's myself, there's four directors. Um, and then we have a variety of, now we have three, three coordinators, coordinator of education, environmental literacy and um family engagement. Uh, and then there's a few others, a community liaison, um, depending on how they fall, like Dr. Keller supports the nurses, uh, even though they're at the sites, like I support our district librarians, even though they're set up at the sites. Uh, Mrs. White supports our psychologists who, even though they're located at the school sites. So it depends on how you look at it, but it's, there's a variety of staff that's supported through there. Um, right now we have um Mrs. Joyce, who is our main person that supports almost everybody in that group as well.
One clerical for all those people?
Uh, we have one more that helps part-time for us as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, a motion, please.
Moved.
One of you be second, right? Okay, any discussion, any further discussion?
It seems like this is really needed if you only have, have all those people and just one clerical staff. Um, but I, I also want to make a pitch. I think some of our, some of our classrooms' teachers also need an instructional assistant when they, we know kids have more social emotional issues, more uh special needs kids are being integrated. And um even though their class sizes are not high, it's, it's very difficult to meet all the needs. So I just want to say we need this, but there are other, other needs also.
Uh, just briefly, we, to your, to your point, um, that's one area we haven't actually reduced in. Um, in fact, you know, we've, we have less students, but we have not redone, really reduced in instructional aid support. So there is plenty of aid support to go around, even more so than past years, because we are smaller, we have less teachers. But the aid certificate hours have not really moved. So factor when we had three thousand students, we had this same number of eight hours that we have now for current students. So that's a good thing for us, because it means there's smaller classes and the aides are, we have more aide hours to go around, because we have less actual FTE for teachers, so.
Well, in, in just speaking with teachers, I know a long time ago, every teacher had an aide for three hours a day. We had more students, but we all had aides. Then class reduction came and we had less students and many of us didn't have an aide. But I think we could provide a better education for all our students when we did have an aide and someone else in the room, especially if you have um students that really have a lot of needs that you need to focus on, need somebody else to do things with others. It's, you can go home and really discourage that you're not meeting all the needs if you're by yourself with a variety of language needs, of special ed needs, of social emotional needs, et cetera, it can be very, very difficult.
That's a, that's a great point, but I feel like we're a little off topic, unless Dr. Malchesky, you're going to bring us back onto the?
No, I was going to suggest we were perhaps conflating administrative with academic needs. And I think, I see this as a somewhat different issue, even though those are perfectly valid points.
Yeah, I think we all agree, yeah, different.
It's a different issue.
Yeah, but hiring one assistant in that office is, yeah. And that has nothing to do with whether we want to hire many aides to support teachers, which is a perfectly legitimate conversation to have at some point, I think.
Thank you. You have something else to add, Kim?
I was going to move us forward.
Right. Student, we have motion on the floor, student vote? Board members on in favor? I opposed, carries five oh. Thank you. And now, item twelve A, approval of agreement between Green Schools National Network and Laguna Beach Unified School District to develop an action plan to increase our district's health, equity and sustainability in an amount not to exceed thirty-two thousand four hundred. Any public comment on this item?
No.
Thank you. And Ms. Dr. Mayberry?
Yeah, thank you. This, this would be a year two, uh, working with our Green Schools um network, um, who's been a really wonderful partner around sustainability, uh, especially last year, which that was, when that was our focus. And now we've moved obviously a lot more into the environment literacy, uh, with our coordinator, with uh our new coordinator, environmental literacy, uh, and Ms. Harwood. And so uh this was, uh, the plan with this is we continue to kind of help with some of our green teamwork, to help consult on the green school application that we're doing right now. Um, we partner with them on a few different things. Um, I don't know if we'll necessarily need this down the road. Uh, but I think it's been really good as we've, to have this as a partner of these first two years, as we've put that emphasis in trying to be carbon neutral, as well as uh really looking at climate change and having an action plan on how we're doing our part uh towards that um, the endeavor. So uh we were asking to bring this forward for a year two. Uh, I think we'd want, we're going to review it at the end of this year, if it's something we want to continue next year, but definitely find it as a valuable um use for this year.
Thank you. Any questions? Motion, please? A question?
Yes. So a- as I looked through this plan, there are quite a few things that we didn't look at last year. But you're saying if we, if we um adopt this, that we will look at them this year? You know, like I'm looking at um facilities, leaders, engage community partners. And there are so many community partners in this field that want to be engaged, that have not been talked to at all. And it's that, uh, I, I'm looking at a lot of things in here and I don't see us doing them. And so I'm a little leery of adopting this if we're not going to use it anyway.
I think one of the challenges we've had at this point, when, when you pass, we passed the resolution, the board passed the resolution in this area, is we didn't have any dedicated staff to do this. This was out, we all jumped in hands-on to support this. And while we did have lots of partnerships and different lessons going on in classes, now that we have a coordinator, environmental literacy, thanks to the board's support, like it allow those partnerships to expand beyond what they are now, right? So similarly, we've added a full-time visual performing arts TOSA. It helped enhance our partnerships with our local arts organizations, because we had someone that had flexible time uh to focus on this rather than this plus another job. So um we're hoping that that, of course, our partnerships will expand. We think our local, this is a, the environment is a, one of the, part of the culture of Laguna Beach. And so uh it's, we actually, the coordinator of environmental literacy is working with our unit design team. And so it's, we actually, the coordinator of environmental literacy is working with our unit design team, so that the lessons are building this into, our, their kids are getting lessons on this on a regular basis. It's not just something that happens in science class. So all those things that are in here are things we want to work on. Obviously, this is their general approach. We tailor it to our local community and what our needs are.
Yeah, I just wanted to add some discussion to this, because I've had, I know, Member Perry, we served on the, as board representatives to this committee on sustainability last year. So we were both really familiar with Green Schools Network. And I'm really enthusiastic and supportive of bringing this forward for a second year. I think with our new coordinator of environmental literacy, it's more important than ever to have her connected to this field. As somebody that works in this field, it's a little nichey. And finding the people that know about demonstration solar power, or finding the districts that have done this really well, takes a special art. And I think Green Schools Network is connected into that area already, through Cali, which is statewide California educators kind of in this space. And so I had a same kind of concerns initially, but I think if we want to see more action, like you're saying, I want to see more action. The smartest thing we could do is approve this contract to continue to get more action in this space and can connect our TOSA in this area to these experts. San Mateo, other county offices, other school districts, and that have done this work are, are really important to our learning curve, as well as our individual environmental organizations, which I think the VAPA example was a great analogy, so.
Are there any other questions before we have a motion, so we can go into further discussion?
Okay, I, I have a question.
Okay.
You're convincing me. Can you explain? So we hired the new coordinator of environmental literacy to implement environmental literacy and for the LBUSD Sustainability Plan. Can you explain why we are spending so much time working on the application for the green ribbon? I'm not seeing, I mean, that's a wonderful thing to get an award or a trophy, but I, I guess I was really excited about this affecting students and students, you know, getting more environmental literacy. And I, I don't, I don't see how all those hours spent that everybody's spending is directly affecting our students right now. And how, how is it? Maybe I'm missing it.
Well, I think it's important to recognize that we're trying to capture what we're currently doing. And the, the, we talked about this last year, when we actually brought on the green schools, was that the, one of the penultimate things that we were going to do as a result of their work? Our work together with them was to apply. So that was actually something we had shared with the board last, last year, when we brought on green schools. So you, it's an opportunity for us to capture, I think, highlighting that, that's all we're doing, that, that's a misnomer. The work that, as Chad mentioned, getting in and talking about lesson design, getting in and talking to students about what are some opportunities of things that we're not currently doing, that we should be doing, which is what we talked about at our most recent superintendent advisory, which I share with the board in the weekly update. So I think we are having those conversations. I think we need to recognize too, it's October. This, she has been in her position for a couple of months, has made a huge headway in terms of making connections. She's made connections with Eclipse, which is out of UCI, and Kelly Lee, and we've been working with them. We've worked in the partner and sent out surveys and gathering a lot of information. So she, she's, you know, getting the lay of the land, and then we're bringing, doing a request for proposals for all the solar stuff on the operational side too. So that's coming forward to the board. So I think, you know, when you're looking at, as a small school district, with the amount of people that we have trying to move the ball forward, I think we're doing a fantastic job. We're not going to be able to accomplish all the things that we want to do tomorrow, but they all take incremental steps. And I think, you know, we're going to get there, and, and that's why it's one of the goals that we've set forth by the end of the year. We're going to have some more measures that we can look at, because getting to carbon neutrality by twenty thirty is a huge lift. While at the same time impacting what's going on in the classroom. We have two different things that we're chat, that we're very much challenged by right now, that we're trying to work through. And it's going to take a little bit of time, but I don't want it to, the sense to be that she's spending all this time doing that work. The bulk of that application is actually, for, and Jeff knows this, because he did a lot of the last one as well, is a lot of its facilities and back-end operational side. So it, it is a good opportunity for Gloria to understand what's going on in the district, what has happened, and what the practices are. So that as we're continuing to move forward, we can say, let's evolve this, let's move this. But she can't, without that knowledge, she doesn't know. So it's, it's actually a great learning opportunity for her as well, to be a part of it. But I want to be clear that that's not, she hasn't been doing that. She's been going out and learning and being part of learning walks. But really being focused on gathering information around what are our current practices and where are those opportunities to move it forward. And that was what we had shared last year, when we brought green schools forward, was the first year was going to be very much operational. The second year, as we moved in, excuse me, was going to be more around classroom instruction. And that's what we're bringing them back for this year, is really trying to focus on that. So I'm proud of the work we've done so far, and I think the, the board should be, we presented to you, to you kind of both on weekly updates and. But we're, we are doing far more than many other places. Most anybody I've talked to, Orange County, doesn't even have these positions, so we're well ahead of the curve. And I think our partnership actually with UCI and the Eclipse program is probably going to put us at the front end of everything, because, you know, we're, we're right in there in that mix and being able to offer a lot more. So again, I think we're, I think we're on the right track and trajectory. I know it's, there are things that we could continue to be doing maybe a little better here and there, but overall, I'm, I'm proud of where we're at so far, so.
I think Dr. Glory or Dr. Mayberry, maybe to address Member Perry's concern or question, really. And after we're done with the, the green ribbon application, because having worked on one myself, it's a beast. And it's, and it's due, right? So we're almost to the end of it. But maybe sometime in late winter or early spring, we could take a look at a set of community relationships. Maybe that could be something Green Schools Network does that's of interest to the board and, you know, work to set up some meetings. I know Ms. Harwood has been taking any meeting of environmental groups that have reached out to her directly. There was a lot of good press about her position, so she actually did get a lot of inbound inquiries, and is always happy to take those meetings and connect. But maybe that's something that Mr. Barrett or this group could help us with, and make sure that we, you know, hear back in the next, you know, whatever, six months or something on that.
And and that we can
Second.
Second. And that we can provide more opportunities for students. I mean, we know many students are very concerned about environmental issues. And I, I understand it takes a while, but I really thought we would be further along at this point.
Well, I mean, I just.
And I, I, and I, I don't even want Jeff spending all that time on it, anybody. I don't under, I, I guess I'm missing, why would we be spending hours writing this?
I guess I'm confused. I'm not understanding, I'm not seeing where the information's coming from, that she's not with kids or not with teachers. If, if you're getting that information from other people, that would be helpful. We are working on application, it's a very robust application, it's really an audit of what we do, and it's due tomorrow. So that's why we're talking about it. But she's, she was meeting with kids today, she was on our learning walk today, she's doing a plethora of things with students. She runs our green teams at all four schools. She's in, talking to the high school teachers, helping with the flow project up there, giving them additional support. So it's a wide variety of things that she is doing. So if you're getting information that she's not, she's just in her office, like that's not what I'm seeing. So if that is true, then let us know, but I'm not, I'm not seeing that or hearing that. So she's out there with kids, this is just something that's really important right now that we're putting forward, and it's really part of the process. Like what do we do? That's what the application really is. It's not, we're not doing it to like win some award. We, if we get one, great, we're doing it, because we needed to do an audit at some point anyways. Of like, here's all the things we do around the three pillars of the green schools. And so it's a really good process to go through for everybody, and we've met with principals around it. And we could have done it separately outside of this, but it's nice that it's tied to an application, because there's some formality to it, and there's a really good self-reflection tool to it. So but I can tell you, like, she's spent a lot of times with, her primary time, her primary time is spent with students and teachers.
The other thing I would add to that is, I, I hear your point, but I also think that it's a, a kind of award that creates an identity and culture around things that the school district is really caring about and spending a lot of time and effort. And it signals to parents and families, and therefore students, that these are things we really care about, and it's part of the Laguna Beach culture. So I do see value in it, even though there's a lot of time spent. I don't think it takes time away from the student programs, as, as Dr. Mayberry's pointed out. But I think there's other sort of intrinsic value that isn't necessarily measurable.
I think that was evident when we did this before, and we had the celebration at Top of the World, and the different people came and recognized the different components of what we had been doing. I agree with you that it is important to the community that we seek recognition for areas that we've excelled in. It, right, that's true. It shares information. I was going to ask our students. I'm, I have an impression that quite a bit is being done at the high school without reaching to the community and by some of the clubs and relationships with the community groups. Is that accurate at all?
Yeah, I'll speak to it a little bit. We have a program at the high school called Flow. And essentially, it's like entirely focused on like environment, like the environment. And each grade level actually reads like a book each year, like about the environment related to like their topic, whether that's land, water, et cetera. And last year, Mr. Shen, my, one of my teachers, actually, he worked with community partners, he worked with the Coast Film Festival as well, to kind of promote this and to show like, you know, we're, like, students are caring about the environment, and his multi, and his video production class, they did, they submitted films for the, the film festival that we hold. I think it's at the festival, the Pat and the Masters that we hold. And I think it's really important, it's like students were actually motivated to participate in this club. The club also went out with Laguna Canyon Foundation, I know, at the end of last year as well, and they did like some sort of service project with Mr. Shen and Ms. Benson. And so I think it's really important. A lot of kids were interested in doing it, I think, because the more I talk to other students on campus, not just my view as well, is that the environment is something they're interested in, the environment is something they care about, and climate change is something that they think that needs to be addressed. And I think this is, you know, I, as you know, Member Joanne said, like, this exactly, this creates a culture of, for students to say like, no, like, the, the board also cares about, our school also cares about the environment, and we're not just pushing it to the side.
And then to touch on that, we also work with, I'm vice president of the Interact Club at my school, and we work a lot with the Rotary Club in Laguna Beach. So they're a huge community partner. We're also working with the Rotary Club in Dana Point. We're trying to make a film festival happen down there. But basically, my point, a lot of students come to those clubs and interact with our communities, and we're able to give back. And it's honestly a surprising amount, like, our students at our school really do care about giving back to our community, and it shows through our clubs.
Thank you.
One other comment before we leave the green ribbon award concept, to Dr. Malchesky's point, to President Vickers' point. In two thousand eighteen, when Top of the World was awarded that green ribbon award at the highest level, it wasn't, I wouldn't say it's just recognition. There's a durable culture that's formed at that school that doesn't go away. So by baselining it, by knowing what you are doing, by everybody at that site and district knowing what's happening there. What I've observed over the last five to six years is those things are durable, those practices and cultures and values of the site stay. And, you know, they were one of the first schools to be recycling their waste in yellow bags. That was back in two thousand seventeen, those things stay. It's not really recognition, it's about setting up the culture of the school and building endurable things that will persist throughout time. That's been my experience with the one that we want at the site level.
Yes. Student vote? Board members all in favor? Aye, opposed, carries five oh, thank you. Item thirteen is our consent calendar. Is there any public comment on consent calendar?
No.
Thank you. Any items that board members need to pull off consent? Then it asks for a motion for consent items. C through P. Is there a second? Student vote? Board members all in favor? Aye, opposed, carries five oh, thank you. Move to governance, information discussion, it's a, item A, discussion regarding setting meeting dates for two thousand twenty-four. We have public comment?
No.
Thank you.
So can I ask a question about it? I remain somewhat confused about the December meeting option here, because it says that there is combined December meeting dates into one meeting, Friday, we're, we're proposing a meeting on Friday the thirteenth or Monday the sixteenth, is, am I reading correctly?
So those are the only two dates that would meet the requirement. Those are the only two dates that would meet the requirements of the December meeting. We can't have it before December thirteenth. And the first interim is due on the fifteenth, but because it's on a Sunday, the county OCDE has stated we could have till Monday to turn it in. So those are our two options, either Monday or Friday, to, to only have to have one meeting.
Why can't we do it before the twelfth? I don't, I don't understand.
Because due to election rules, you have to have the, the meeting within a two-week window. The two-week window starts December thirteenth. So you can't have it on the twelfth. It's AB two four four nine, it's, it's a legislative ruling.
Right, so we have a meeting on December nineteenth.
No, so it would either be the thirteenth or the sixteenth, we would, we would not have one the twelfth or the nineteenth.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
So you asked me to bring back options, the highlighted one of the options in lieu of.
I see, I'm sorry, that's what I was confused about.
That nineteenth would be canceled.
All right, well, personally, I prefer Monday the sixteenth, but.
Yeah, I agree, especially, so that would be the one meeting, Victoria, in December? Yeah, so no December twelfth, no December nineteenth, no on Friday, December thirteenth, nobody wants to have a board meeting on Friday, correct me if I'm wrong, everybody?
I, no.
Especially Friday the thirteenth.
Especially Friday the thirteenth at the end of the year, so Monday, December sixteenth, right?
Perfect.
Is everybody D, Jim? And Jim, yeah, okay.
Fix one, half dozen of the other.
See the other one highlighted?
That would be in lieu of the June twentieth.
Oh, so we have high school graduation on the thirteenth. And then we're proposing.
Yeah, there was an objection to having a meeting during that two-week period of time. Because normally, we have a meeting.
After graduation.
Right, normally, we have a business meeting in late June.
Right.
And President Vickers too, I'm fine, if you guys want to proceed with a meeting during that two-week dead period that high school athletics takes off, I'm fine with missing a meeting. I don't want everybody to, I don't want to mess up any board business, but I'm also fine with meeting on the proposed dates that Victoria shows and, and having a two-week break.
Yeah, I'm, I'm.
How busy staff is during that time when it's the last week of school, as far as preparing for a meeting, I don't, that would be consideration to me.
We're, you know, for us, if the board was to move it to the tenth, we would, staff would, we would find a way to make it work, with the advantage being that then my staff could actually take off a little bit more, there'd be a little bit more of an extended window between the tenth and the twenty-fifth of July, that vacations could actually happen. So there's, there's a little bit of advantage in that sense. It would, it will be tight. But, you know, we have, I, I think we're, I think we can, we can make it, we could try it for a year even. I mean, that's the other part of it. No, no one says next year we'd have to do it again, if we recognize, oh, it's too much. But we wouldn't put it forward if we couldn't, I don't think we can pull it off. So we're, we're comfortable with the, I'd prefer the tenth on, I think, honestly, versus the Tuesday, because it's just a Tuesday, just gets a, just abs a little closer to graduation. But I think the tenth for us would be probably a little, if the board was comfortable with that, plus it doesn't conflict in with the city, so.
More in your guys' area.
Yeah, I mean, what, it'll mean wait, you said move it January eleventh, move it that, keep that, keep that as a business meeting?
He wants, he wants to switch the subjects, so he wants the eleventh to be the recognition and the twenty-third to be the business meeting.
Oh, that's fine.
Because otherwise, I mean, we're going to be prepping over break, so by moving it that way, I mean, it puts a Because otherwise, I mean, we're going to be prepping over break. So by moving it that way, I mean, it puts a little pressure on the recognition in terms of getting invitations out potentially, but um, if we get it out before break and then just do a reminder, right? We, we could pull that up. We'll do, yeah, we'll do the before break and then reminder right when the week kicks off, but we can, I don't think there's anything, Jeff, there's nothing on the budgetary that we have to get done by that.
No, I just left.
So yeah, I think we can make that, make that um, so, so what we'll do is we'll make that edit. We'll bring back the other, the Monday, June tenth, and then that way we'll look at it one more time and then we should be good to go by the December meeting at this point.
Okay. And then the city has asked for proposed meeting and is the April eighteenth date good for everybody? That'd be prior to our regular meeting.
April.
April eighteenth.
Typically, we just do a one hour session before um, we meet, uh, before our regular meeting. So we wouldn't have closed session that day probably, if we could avoid it. Otherwise, we'd close at three.
Right. And where would we, who hosts this one?
And, and I let, I let Beckett know it'd be, it'd be here most likely.
Okay.
So President Vickers, we're okay as a board. We have the three regular business meetings that we've moved to non Thursdays. So the January one is swapped to a Tuesday, the one of graduation week because of the dead period has swapped to a Monday. And the December meeting has swapped to a Monday. Um, are we all okay with, with that? I know we're talking about it a year in advance, but it kind of gets us off our cadence. Do we, is there a way we communicate that maybe to the public that?
Yeah, when, when you guys approve it, we put, we pushed this all out. Yeah. And so it, it goes out, we would put it in its wrap with the meeting dates for the year. And it's posted on our website and the board policy is we had it redone when you guys worked on that one with Mark was that though it doesn't lock you in that you have to do them on those dates, that you had that flexibility to, to do that. So um, again, it's everyone knows tonight's the board meeting night, so.
Nobody came. Yeah, that's fine. Maybe we'll put an asterisk or something on some of it.
And it's, it gets posted in a lot of places. So like, for example, it's on the Voice of OC. They posted on their website, all the board meetings that gets posted and uh, Stu News also posts them. So it's, our meeting dates are, are out there so people can see them. So yeah, it's when you change them at the last minute to something different. That's when, but if you're a year in advance um, of all these meetings and, and we'll, we can push things out, we'll, we'll definitely let people know.
We can also uh, emphasize it right at the time of that particular meeting. So put out extra notification that it's on a different day of the week. Okay, thank you. We have a governance action item. Uh, second reading and approval of board policy, six, one, four, five point six, international exchange.
No public comments.
Thank you. Do we have any questions on this? No, it's coming for a second reading. So motion please? Any discussion? Student vote. Board members all in favor. I oppose. Carrie's five oh. We have board member reports. Uh, just before we start.
Do we have any reports other than the report you gave about the school sites? Do you have anything you want to tell us?
Nothing.
Okay, well, they're provisional, but they are a part of the team. Okay, Kelly.
Thanks, President Vickers. Um, a couple of things since our last regular board meeting, uh, last week I attended the Green Schools Conference um, in Pasadena. Um, I attended the Family Resource Center opening. It was so great to see the entire board there. That was really nice for us all to be together. And uh, I know member Perry and I went around and did all the stations with the thing. So thank you for staff, um, for setting up that uh, structured activity for us. Um, I also went to the college fair. Oh, my gosh, not a seat left in the house. Great speaker, so, so beautiful under the lights. At first your eyes had to adjust a little to see the stuff on the tables and then you totally got into the the zen kind of mode of being under the lights in the quad with the turf there. It was really great. And um, I wanted to let you guys know a couple of things upcoming. Uh, the Thurston uh, bike lane that's going to be coming up, Park Avenue is going to Planning Council um, this coming month. So I know in our last meeting with the, the past city manager, um, Sheree, she mentioned that that bike lane coming up to Thurston will be um, installed. It's in the CIP and it's going to planning finally. So um, it's been two years in the works. And then additionally, the Parking and Traffic um, Circulation Subcommittee from the city has put in a request for expanded bike lanes around all of our campuses. So connecting uh, the loop around the high school, the Thurston route, uh, the top of the world route uh, with much better bike signage. So they're going to try and get that through their subcommittee and they're really interested in working on um, any other safe routes to school stuff in the future, if that was a um, interest of the board. Um, the subcommittee that member Vickers, President Vickers and I are on regarding the pool will meet on December fourth. Thank you, Victoria, for scheduling all ten of us or however many people are coming. Um, and I also appreciated touring the Aliso property with Dr. Valoria, looking at that National Church Residences facility where the property lines are. Um, fellow board members, I got to kind of Lang Park, the existing preschool, the rec rooms. Um, we kind of walked throughout the whole property. And um, I also got to attend a girls volleyball game in the gym. Got to see the condition of the current gym and the old gym with the um, floors that are less desirable by those lower level teams. Um, so hopefully we can repair that at some point. And I got to see the boys' water polo senior night um, as well on last month to help frame some of the facilities discussions. Um, and lastly, on that flex time and the data you guys provided on the math um, interventions that we're doing and the use of tutorial at the secondary level, kudos to all the people working on that because um, students choosing where they want to go and what they need help with or teachers calling them for extra help um, seems to be um, really a different direction for us that could benefit students. So that's it. That's my report.
Thanks. I hardly remember when, what I've done since that, the last drill meeting. Um, uh, love the Family Resource Center. I think the staff there is fabulous and I, I'm so glad we have that. Um, I saw most of you at the College and Career Night and I was so impressed with our students. I mean, how kind they were and can I carry something for you? Can I show you where this is? Besides the speaker and all of the, all of the colleges that were there. Um, looking, looking at things coming up, I also wanted to mention, like you did, that the Ocean Music and Film Festival is coming up. And we also have Art and Nature and many of our students are volunteering, especially on Sunday, the family day. The artist Christopher Chahowski, um, his outdoor artwork is called Rising Inversion. And it's cool, it will be cool to look at it during the day, but at night it yeah, it lights up. It's, it's got all this phosphorescence on it. So it will be really, really cool. And at seven o'clock on Saturday, he did a combination of the recording the waves and you know, surround sound and coast highway in surround sound. And he's mixing those both together and then having all this, all the phosphorescence come up. So it should be really great. And I know students are, are coming and helping with that. And um, I also wanted to mention that the high school is performing holes coming and that was one of my students' favorite novels back in the day. So, thanks.
Because it's very fluorescent and uh, Tony Crevié started me today and stopped me today and says, do these things, um, are you adding? Are they moving you, you moving them around? No, at night they change positions. They're, they're, they take on their own life. I mean, it's just, it's just incredible. Well, I, I, they, I tried to turn them off by ten, but for some reason I got involved and wasn't until midnight. So, so some of the neighbor, so, 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 so some of the neighbors I was at the Family Resource Opening and I agree with my predecessors as far as what they had to say. My only thing to add there was that um, I asked about, um, were there any problems with the neighbors with uh, doing this project? And there were no problems with any of the neighbors and uh, and again, this is another successful project that our facilities people have done uh, in a community that uh, that did not cause harm and did it in a very successful way. I also went to college night and, and again, the thing I pointed out to the PTA was uh, it's a uh, it's buyer's market that all those schools that were there are looking for, looking for students that uh, there's lots of opportunities as far as for you to go to a private school and you can get a good deal. Uh, don't be paying the sticker price as far as like you buying a car, you know, it's negotiable. Um, I also uh, went to the PTA council, which I totally love uh, working with uh, all of the members there. Uh, they're working on their membership slots. If you haven't joined yet, please join all the four PTAs. They, they need your support and money. Um, I also uh, could spend the rest of the night telling you about the activities of each school, but I would just recommend, you know, you, you join PTA and they send you a uh, a listing uh, for each of the schools. And I, I just got the recent one from Thurston and uh, it's they're all just incredibly, and I, I don't know where these people get the time to have, to work with their children, to do these events and, and have jobs. Um, and I guess that's it. I'm sorry, they don't have dogs.
Right. I have no report beyond that.
Did want to comment on the Family Resource Center that I don't think when I was nicely asked to make some comments that I actually complimented the building because it really is such a redo on that building. You wouldn't have imagined it. Being transformed from what it was and it fits in nicely with the neighborhood. And to the comment about the problems with the neighbors, that's to the credit of um, Mr. Dixon and Mr. Zeta. They really reach out to the neighbors. They stay on top of things and we've been very successful with that since they've been working with the district in the facilities position. Jeff before Ryan and uh, reaching out to the neighbors and keeping them informed makes a world of difference. As the others, I attended the college night and uh, the, I just wanted to say the, I appreciated um, Sarah's comments on the value of conferences because I certainly remember that with my students and found it really, really valuable to have that personal contact with the teachers and to share things about your student that they, as she said, holding confidence, but that they need to know and help them relate and have a relationship with your student. So I, I'm, it was, um, I thought great that she gave that, those kudos to her teachers. They, um, I'm just curious about seeing a recent social, social media with uh, Meta and the thirty three Attorney Generals that we're involved in something that is a school district. And I don't know if you could just sometime in the update, let us know where that is. Um, and then again, because I know it is like I'm a broken record with uh, tributes to our business department, our finance and our budget and the great confidence that I have in the facts and figures that were given and the accountability that we have is our audit shows every year, but reading about that recent incident in Magnolia School District, it is incredible to me how that happened and their auditors must be pulling their hair out. But so without that due diligence and without the accountability, those things can happen in school districts and it's tragic. So thank you again for what you do. And that's Dr. Gloria.
No report.
Then we need a motion to adjourn. Please. Student vote. Board members all in favor. I oppose. Carrie's five oh. And you're, that's an easy one, isn't it?